I don't have anything to hammer, so good evening. It's July 7th, City Council Study Session. Welcome, everyone. City Council reports, Councilor Zadi?
I just want to say the conference last week, I know that we were, most of us were there, and it went brilliantly, and I'm willing to exchange notes. I know usually we send them, but then we had them all in our own little application this time. But I attended lots of excellent panels, and I ended up doing a panel that I was invited to last minute, and that was a lot of fun. I just, I had a great time. Just say what I was doing last week, and obviously I was in Breckenridge, so.
Councilor Demat?
That's for me.
Number 10.
Similarly, I should say that I really enjoyed the Breckenridge Conference, and your panel was fantastic. It was with several other younger generation city councilors, and just their sharing what their experiences are was very helpful and enlightening. So, and one of the sessions that I attended was about nuclear energy in Colorado, so that was very, I don't know, range of emotions on that one, so I may actually be joining some conversations about that through CC4CA, so just so I can get more information on it.
That's the reason we belong to things, so we can get more information, right? Sparkler Tournament this weekend was, I don't know if we have anybody from Parks and Rec listening or here, but they were absolutely fantastic. The work that it takes to put this thing on 1,100 teams, and I don't care where you wanted to go eat, it had to be good for our restaurants because they were all packed. So I hope everybody had a fun time. Stephanie, that I always work with the night that I threw out the pitch, is just, she is a person in motion for the whole time that they're here. Got to talk to some of the people that are here from other states, and 47 states were here. Yeah, so it's exciting. It was, it was great. CML was fantastic, always a great conference, getting to hear things, and went to one workshop on dashboards, because I always hear about dashboards but didn't know what they really were and how you used them, so that was interesting. And it didn't, you didn't have to be a techie to understand it, and they did put it in 101, so it was good, and gave you some tips of some of the freebie stuff out there to create whatever you were looking for. But, you know, when you sit with other people from cities that have 500 to those in the millions from Denver, we all have the same issues. How we go about solving those aren't real different from each other. A lot of it always depends on size, and I will never forget, Julesburg, they have enough people, staff working, that they all have to be trained in each other's stuff just so that managers can go on vacation. And, you know, stop and think about that when we have a city our size. It's just, it's always worthwhile, and I, I'm glad we had so many go this year. It was, it was fantastic. There is an update on me and my personal piece with my cancer. Last Wednesday, I had to leave my trial because we had a second oops on the stuff that I had on the 30th, and it was six weeks ago, had the same oops. So there's no new cancer, but when it lights up, it tells them something's active. So he had to take me off of the trial, so I am very patiently waiting. There is a second trial that he believes I can get into. There was one space open as of Thursday. He called me late in the day, and my name is a placeholder in that, so that if I pass all the protocols, I can do it. But then he said my kidney count wasn't what has to be for the trial, so he said, "In the next three days, can I get you to spend four hours at the hospital getting hydrated, and we take another test?" So I did that Saturday, and I haven't heard anything, and his last words to me were, "No news will be good news, because we will, if everything starts working, they have to look at how long I have to be off of everything to start something new, then they have to look at the new protocols." And I do know it would mean once a week, or four weeks, that I have to go in, which is nothing compared to what I started three times a week for the first two months. So that seems like reasonable, and the only thing is if it's four weeks I have to wait, I will miss vacation with our entire family by three days. So my fingers are crossed, and I just have hope that everything works out, but I don't know, so stay tuned. Councilor Ireland, anything?
Nothing to report, but I've just been time snuggling my new grandbabies, so it was a good week. Well, thank you.
City Manager?
I do have a report this evening, if we're ready to jump into that. All right, so next slide, please. I want to first report that the city held another very successful Fourth of July. City departments collaborated in a multi-department effort to ensure a safe and happy Fourth of July for more than 13,000 attendees this year. That's more than 1,000 from last year, which was also a very popular one, and very happy to report no incidents, public safety incidents whatsoever. I want to thank our Parks, Rec, and Libraries Special Events Team, and provide a piece of feedback that we received via our Facebook account, and that is, "They thought the fireworks were great, but the management of trash, recycling, bathrooms, and shuttles was perfection." And we heard that a lot from people there that day, including my family members, and I thought it went very well. Next slide, please. I do want to also point out this year that fire and police personnel were on site, and we had very good representations from both departments, providing emergency medical, fire, and public safety support. And I also want to let everybody know in the community that the city uses these events to plan and develop long-term safety planning initiatives, and we tried some different things this year that went very well, and we're going to continue to make those upgrades and improvements to make sure that future events are just as safe as the one we held this year. And I want to also let people know that all of the best photos from the weekend are posted on westy.news, and I put a sampling of some of those shots in here, but very positive folks, and you can see in these ones, high engagement from our police officers, which was really strong. Next slide, please. I do want to point out, if you haven't been tracking, the weather forecasts, that we are expecting a heat wave this week, and I want to emphasize this existing city program, that residents are encouraged to visit any city facility, including all of our recreation centers as cooling centers. Those are open, and we welcome any member of our community to come inside and cool off. And here we have, I have a picture of our swimming fit recently overhauled. Our navigators have also printed out materials to distribute to their clients, which are significant, and those are folks who might not have access to our website or electronic media, and so physical handouts are currently being distributed to make sure everybody knows that these are cooling centers available to all. And I also want to let know, let folks know, we started pushing bilingual notifications out today, so that will also reach our Spanish-speaking population, this information. Next slide, please. I want to highlight, next Tuesday, the mayor and I will be hosting our monthly community update meeting, and the next week, after talking to a number of community members, we've decided to focus on historic Westminster and the things happening in historic Westminster. Of course, we want to provide the latest information in terms of what City Council has approved regarding the rodeo market building renovations, as well as the infrastructure around that building and neighboring properties, including the park. And also, I want to provide an update on the municipal courthouse construction, update on England Park, Irving Street Park, and other parks and recreation improvements in the neighborhood, as well as the 73L community event space, some exciting things coming up there, as well as in general, some of the other initiatives we're tackling right now in historic Westminster. The theme of the night will be that the city is in action mode and no longer in planning mode in historic Westminster, so we're making forward progress on a number of things in historic Westminster.
And I think Councilor Hott must have had influence on the 73L with the salsa event. I really didn't. It was all coincidence. I'm super excited, though. I'm proud of you.
Yeah, we're going to be looking for Councilor Hott's participation in that.
I will be participating.
Excellent. All right, next slide, please. For tonight, it is a study session night this evening. We have, I have two information-only items in the packet in public record. One is an update on our large item pickup program. We do receive questions every year about the opportunities available to have large items collected or dropped off, so the memo is a wealth of resources around those services. And then also included is our 2024 report of administratively-approved PDPs and ODPs, or preliminary and official development plan amendments, and so those are reported to City Council annually, and this is the 2024 report for your review. Tonight, we have three presentations up, the first of which will be the City Manager's authority to promulgate regulations on use and access related to city properties and facilities, and providing for enforcement by park rangers. So this is the follow-up to a City Council discussion and direction, and is really something we'll get into in the presentation, but a leveling of the playing field for all city properties to make it much clearer and simpler for our community to understand how the regulations apply, regardless of whether it's a park or drinking water facility land. Next up will be your presentation on Jefferson County Regional Approach to Cold Weather Sheltering, so this is a follow-up, Councilor Zadi, to the workshop that we hosted at Westview Recreation Center, and an update on negotiations that I have had with our neighboring Jefferson County cities, and so we'll get into that in a little bit. And then thirdly, tonight, emergency services and neighborhood streets polling results and next steps. Chris Lindsay will lead an introduction to the polling results as directed by City Council, and then we have our polling firm Magellan representative here this evening to walk through in significant detail the questions asked and the responses and what those mean, and then we'll open it up for discussion and direction from City Council. That will likely be the heart of the evening in terms of most of the material. I know Magellan has a pretty weighty presentation that they're going to work through to get you all the information that our community gave us on that poll. And then next up, to close out the evening, is an executive session, and that's regarding strategy and progress on the potential sale, acquisition, trade, or exchange of property or property rights related to city-owned open space located east of Westminster Boulevard on the south side of West 104th Avenue, so that's the property southeast corner of the 104th and Westminster Boulevard intersection, and that will close out the evening. Next slide, please. This week, some things happening. On Tuesday, tomorrow night, there is a different kind of Planning Commission meeting happening, and that's a workshop with the Planning Commission on the Unified Development Code, and that's right here at City Hall at 6:30 to 8:30. So different format, but that meeting is still happening in workshop format. On Wednesday, July 9th, there is an inclusivity board meeting. That's hybrid format, and that starts at 6:00 PM right here on July 9th. And then on Thursday, July 10th, I want to note that the Parks, Recreation, Libraries Open Space Advisory Board meeting is canceled, so no Proslab meeting this week, and that there is this one, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Part 150 Study Open House, and that's happening at the Omni Interlock and Hotel in Centennial, sorry, in the Centennial Ballroom from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and you can get more information on that from our website. We're posting that for our community's benefit. Next slide, please. Also this week on Saturday is another tree limb recycling at the Brow property. That's at 10001 Alkire Street, and that's open to all residents from 8:00 AM to noon, and that's free of charge, so bring by your tree limbs, and those will be ground up, chipped, and made available for residents to pick up from our chipping site for free. Also, interesting, this is in downtown Westminster at our Central Park Plaza, and that is the Women's Defense Class on the plaza, so that's something new, that's running from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM right in Westminster at our downtown Central Plaza. And then, of course, the 2025 Vintage Baseball Game at Wolf Run Park, which is 4705 West 76th Avenue, and that will run from 9:30 AM till 11:00 AM, and again, that's on Saturday, July 12th. Next slide, please.
And can I just say?
Yes.
The game starts at 10, so it really goes to 12-ish, or unless it goes as a blowout, but anyway, it's usually from 10 to 12. And if you want to sit under the trees, bring a chair. Otherwise, we have benches, but the trees are there, so know that those are in the shade too.
Sounds like if you want a good spot, get there at 9:30.
Yeah.
Get your chair into the shade of the trees. All right, at our next meeting, which is a regular City Council meeting, that's on Monday, July 14th, starts at 6:30 with the pre-meeting. There will be two presentations that evening, Employee Service Awards, and also proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Elizabeth Ann Price. Thank you, Councilor Zadi, that's moving forward. And then on consent agenda, there are five items, and for public hearings, three items, first of which is public hearing and consideration of a preliminary development plan amendment and an ODP for the Walnut Grove Planned Unit Development. Next up will be public hearing and first reading of a councilor's bill rezoning, it's a rezoning for the Pillar of Fire Equipment Barn, and consideration of a PDP and an ODP for the Pillar of Fire Equipment Barn, so an equipment barn on the Pillar of Fire site. And then finally, a third public hearing and resolution regarding approving the First Amendment to the Consolidated Service Plan for Uplands Metropolitan Districts Number 1 and 2. Next slide, please. Also, under Old Business and Passage of Ordinance on Second Reading is the Second Reading of Councilor's Bill Number 20, that's authorizing a supplemental appropriation and a contract amendment with WCG Construction for the adaptive reuse of 3915 West 73rd Avenue for the Bark Restaurant. So that's the second reading of the first reading that City Council passed. Next slide, please. As always, you can contact the city and report a concern using Access Westminster. You can get the app or go directly to westminsterco.gov/AccessWestminster, or phone City Hall at 303-658-2400, or visit our website at westminsterco.gov. And again, I want to say, please test our website, let us know if there's anything in there that we would need to improve. We did overhaul it. We're getting great feedback, and we'll always want to make adjustments and tweak that to make sure it's working. That's all I have there.
Perfect. So first up?
First up is City Manager's Authority to Promulgate Regulations Across City Properties, and that will be co-led by Eric Otzelberger and Police Chief Norm Talbert.
Welcome.
Thank you. Eric Otzelberger, Director, Parks, Recreation, Libraries, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem, City Councilors. This, we're before you this evening to present a draft ordinance and receiving direction on that said draft ordinance. There's been a collaborative effort between the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, Police Department, and Parks, Recreation, and Libraries, following up from study session on, I went a little fast, in March with City Council. So as the City Manager alluded to, what we're aiming to do, we have pretty clear rules and regulations when it comes to private property, pretty clear rules and regulations per Title 13 of the City Westminster Municipal Code when it comes to PRL-owned and managed property, but there's been a bit of a gap when it comes to other city-owned property. And specific examples would include Big Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility, the famed Banana Parcel, the 40 acres adjacent to US 36 and Circle Point, properties like Schoenberg Farms, things that aren't technically Parks, Recreation, and Libraries, aren't technically private property. And we're, you know, per the direction, the chief, and I presented back in March, and City Council provided direction to proceed with examining a regulation on an approach for non-PRL city-owned properties, and how we would go about that, and that's why we're here this evening. So in the packet is a draft ordinance that would, pending direction this evening, would be presented for City Council consideration and action at a regular meeting. The intent of the ordinance would be to provide the City Manager authority to promulgate rules and regulations, very similar to what is on the books with Title 13, just with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. Those are civil rules and regulations. They run the gambit from hours to commercial activity to vehicles to animals, you know, things, just civil rules and regulations. In order for simplicity, consistency, coordination, and multiple departments in coordination and collaboration, operationally, if we were to go forward and you were to provide direction to go forward with this, the park rangers stand ready to enforce rules and regulations, once again, very similar to what has been done for years, rather successfully, with Title 13. It is worth noting, criminal activity is still criminal activity, so Police Department would be engaged for any criminal actions, not the rules and regulations, the civil rules and regulations. And once again, just trying to provide clarity, consistency, and an even approach across all of our city-owned properties. In the spirit of your meaty presentation on polling, we decided to keep it rather short and sweet this evening, and in anticipation, too, that pending direction this evening, you know, there would be another touch point, I mean, when you would consider this an take action, but with that, unless the chief has anything, we'll open up for questions.
Questions? Councilor Kermit?
Yes, so how does this ordinance differ from the PRL one, other than, it sounds like the main difference right now is that the park ranger, well, the park rangers already handle, yeah, would you just go ahead and list all the differences for me, so that we can all understand them?
Assistant City Attorney Matthew Munch, sorry to interrupt. I think I might be able to be of some assistance. There are, if you look at the PRL regulations, they're set out in rather specific detail. You may do this, you may not do this. There's a whole list of prohibited activities, allowed activities, and things like that. On top of that, in the PRL regulations, you also have the ability of the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries to enact other regulations on their authority and to have those enforced as civil violations. This, we certainly could, if City Council gave direction to do so, try to do something similar. However, the reason we prefer to do it this way, as you can see, this essentially matches that second part of the way Parks, Recreation, and Libraries are managed. It only goes to the City Manager or their designee having the authority to promulgate such regulations. The reason we wanted to do it that way, rather than try to put specific regulations in, is because we're dealing with a lot of different types of properties here. This is not just for, excuse me, the sort of big open spaces that you might find outside of a public works facility. This really applies to anything that the city owns or operates. As a matter of fact, we've actually wanted something like this in our code for some time now, because while the City Manager does have existing authority over, say, what doesn't does not happen in city-owned properties, you had to kind of look for it in the code. You had to cross-reference things. It's better to have it just plainly stated. But the regulations you might want to have in place for, say, Big Dry Creek Interceptor, might be different from the regulations you might want to have in place outside of this building, might be different from the regulations you want to have in place inside this building, might be different from the regulations that you might want to have for a piece of property that the city temporarily gets ownership of, such as, I believe, we owned a bank building for a while. We owned Knox Court for a while. This would allow a lot of flexibility for the City Manager to set the appropriate regulations, not only for each different property, but also to adjust those regulations as necessary for different circumstances, without having to go and make a change that would have to be codified and have to come before City Council every time. We wanted that sort of flexibility because there's just a lot more different types of property involved. The one thing I would point out, and I know it's already been pointed out, is trespassing is the only thing this contemplates that can be enforced in any sort of criminal manner. Trespassing is already a offense. It's already a crime under the Westminster Municipal Code and the Colorado statutes. So essentially, what this would do is allow the City Manager to say, doing, you know, being in such a place, you're in the Big Dry Creek Interceptor in a flood zone in a time, place where it's not safe, because if it rains too much, you might drown. If you refuse to leave that place, then it can be enforced as a trespass, and that's when the Police Department can get involved. Everything else this contemplates would be a civil violation. I hope that, was that helpful in answering your question?
Yes, thank you. That was going to be my follow-up, is, are these going to be treated as civil infractions? And it sounds like the answer is yes.
Entirely civil unless it constitutes a trespass. I'm taking the added step of saying that anything that does constitute trespass has to be specifically stated and specifically stated as such and posted on the relevant property. So it's not going to be a surprise. Nobody's going to be able to go someplace and, you know, accuse someone of trespassing in a way that they didn't know about. Anything that can be a trespass, and with, as with most of our trespasses, I let PD answer as to specific procedures. But my understanding is, in almost every circumstance, that will, that only gets employed when a person outright refuses to leave after being advised. So I would expect that to come up relatively rarely and in circumstances when it really might be a risk to that person's safety to stay.
Okay. I'm just helping, I'm trying to understand. So I'm going to ask a few more questions to help understand its purpose and direction. So it is my understanding that we might be talking about the unhoused, right, coming across some of these properties?
That certainly, I should say, like, that certainly is a potential application. There are many other places where, like I said, we've wanted this, or this would have been useful to us in code for any number of other reasons, independent of that. But that is certainly a way that, you know, restricting what ours certain property is and is not available is definitely one thing that this would give the City Manager authority to do, which is not currently stated. Right now, I don't believe there really is anything that, in so many words, governs when people are and are not allowed to be on the lawn outside of Big Dry Creek.
And so if it's a civil infraction, I assume that the consequence would be a fine?
Yes.
And so if the individual is not able to pay the fine, what then? I'm just trying to look at the pipeline of what we're creating.
That would be, I mean, when someone can't pay the fine, that invokes a whole complicated field of civil law that honestly, we cover, it takes a couple of weeks in law school, and you don't even really get to the end of it there. There's a whole court process involved for how the fines are assessed. I can't really give you a more, I mean, it's a fairly broad hypothetical. If it's a civil infraction, then you're talking about a fine or at most a summons to come in and answer, but no one's, no one's getting arrested or incarcerated or anything like that. If it's a trespass, on the other hand, then there's a different process.
And councillor, if I may, just to give some context, so part of why we're proposing this approach is the measured approach the park rangers take and really their efforts to work with individuals. And we have three, with the team, the team has done phenomenal work in the city over the last three years. We have some pretty solid data. Last year, there were 122 new and distinct camps on PRL-owned and managed property. By the end of the year, it was down to five, and those five were eventually resolved. As far as notice of, you know, posting notices, as Assistant Attorney Munch pointed out, that was done 75 times, that, you know, direct engagement, like, hey, you know, the posting. Vast majority of the times, folks move along. Last year, with the assistance of our colleagues in the Police Department, eight arrests were made. Those eight arrests, eight individuals, were just associated with two of those 122 camps. So it happens, but vast majority, over 95%, 97% of the time, were able to work with people and resolve the situation.
And I should reiterate, even if this, if we may, if there was a rule that said this doesn't apply, the City Manager may not apply this, there are all sorts of other independent reasons why we would advise passing this. Just to clarify, the City Manager's authority over things like this building, over things like the Municipal Services Center, all of those, you know, it's anything that the City Manager, or sorry, anything that the city owns or operates. This will be a useful tool for setting rules, completely independent of anything the public will ever see.
And then I'd like to understand, do we have a precedent for this in other cities? Because I'm trying to understand why the authority would be shifted from council to the City Manager, you know, which it makes sense that the manager operates the buildings themselves. So what is that standard?
The reason you might have noticed my boss laughing a little bit to himself there is because he's been listening to me talk about this for months, if not years, about how many other cities, in fact, I'd have to double-check, but I believe every other city that I represented when I worked for a private law firm advising on these issues had something in their code similar to this, that specified that the City Manager has authority over setting the rules and regulations for city-owned property. I was actually rather surprised when I was hired at the City of Westminster and found that that was not in our code. It came up in conversation. It gave me a useful opportunity to harass Mr. Frankel about it again, and here we all are. But yes, there is quite a bit of precedent. I would actually say, I haven't done a thorough survey, but based just sort upon what's come across my desk over my years as a municipal attorney, I would posit that I think it's probably more common to have something like this in your code than not to have it. Again, not really contemplating, not really having anything to do with unhoused people or camping or anything like that, but simply so that it is clear that the City Manager gets to determine how city facilities are run.
Mr. Munch, can you, there was a second part to that question, which was around the City Council authority, and whether there's a shift there from the City Council to the City Manager in this?
I would, I would say that there is not, because the, when this has come up before, we dug through the code, done analysis, and we determined that this authority already exists, and we have been acting on the assumption and on the analysis that this authority for the City Manager already exists. It's implied several places in our code. There's nothing else to contradict it, and someone has to be in charge. In the absence of that specifically stated power, it can be found implied throughout the code, and there's nothing to indicate otherwise. It is not so, there's nothing in the code that would indicate that it is expected, say, of City Council to pass the rules and regulations for how the Municipal Services Center is to be operated. So I would argue that, no, there is no such change. We're simply explicitly stating something that has probably already been true. Now that's with regards to sort of general authority over city facilities. We are getting specific here in talking about what sort, you know, this is a civil infraction, this is, these things are trespasses, and trespasses alone are criminal infractions. But of course, we are enacting this in code. And once enacted in code, City Council is that they're at your discretion to modify that code anytime you see fit.
If I could add to that a little, the manager, under the Charter and the code, obviously is tasked with day-to-day operation of the organization and oversight. And to Mr. Munch's point, the implicit authority that that includes is management of city facilities and city-operated facilities. So I think that's, you know, our perspective on this authority already existing in the manager. The benefit of the proposed ordinance would be to clarify that and say, here it is in the code, and it is exactly, you know, the type of authority, for example, that the Parks and Rec Director enjoys with regard to Parks and Rec-operated and designated properties. So this would essentially fill the gap as between the Parks and Rec facilities, which the Parks and Rec Director has the authority to issue regulations, and the rest of the city-owned and operated facilities. And just to make it very clear that that's within the scope of the Manager's authority.
And as someone who has to do legal research every now and then, I'd really like to take the opportunity to make legal research easier for other people, particularly people who might disagree with us. It's nice to have it just stated. Here it is. You don't have to look for it. We are stating, here's where the City Manager has the authority. Do it, rather than have to have that conversation with somebody who might have an issue with us later on down the road and talking about how, well, if you read this section in conjunction with this section, it clearly implies this. And with that omitted, and it's much better to state it all and say, here it is. You only have to look for it one place.
There's something I do like, it's that last point. So that's a very easy way. I completely agree with that. Clarity and transparency is important, just so that we all understand what's going on. So thank you. I completely agree with that. I think this is really helpful to help me understand what the change is, but also hopefully for our listeners to understand what is within the change. And I'll just voice my concern, if there was any, and while I trust our current City Manager, you know, it's just, I can't help but be concerned. Okay, what if we set a high standard here, or high fee, or high fine, or a high precedent, and then, you know, our Parks and Rec takes liberties by following that precedent, et cetera, you know? So I just want to make sure that hopefully Council has a way, to your point, you know, we can always modify ordinances.
I would point out, so when talking about penalties, you'll see that there is no actual specific penalty set forth in this ordinance. It references to the city's general penalty provisions, which are, of course, contained in a different section of the code, and are subject to modification at the will of City Council at any time. Should City Council in the future face a situation where you want to move around the authority either of what fines are available, or what powers, what types of regulations the City Manager may make, now we have just one section of the code to go to, to be modified by City Council in the future. At the end of the day, you are the legislative body of the city, and you get to make this code your own.
I'd just like to remind us all, we're the ones that do the evaluation of the City Managers. So we have those talks, and if something got out of wacko, you have the conversation with the City Manager.
And we don't, that's why we specifically avoid, we didn't want to set any sort of very specific fine schedule here. The fines are set by City Council, and the municipal judge does what the municipal judge does.
That's helpful to understand. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tim?
So my questions were partially answered. It was more about transparency and implementation on the different sites and where you might have different rules for different types of facilities, and how that would be conveyed to the public, and how individual officers would be able to track that. So that was, maybe you could expound upon that.
If I could refer you to, and I see we have a bit of an indentation issue here, but we hopefully considered that, and we mentioned that it's specifically required in the granting, the clarification of the City Manager's authority. It does put in the obligation that the City Manager, I just had it, they will be posted. They will be made, all such regulations that he makes will be made publicly available, and anything that is a trespass will not only be made publicly available, but we specifically post it on the place where trespass could be. There it is. Any such regulations, rules and procedures shall be made publicly available, and when a violation would constitute a trespass, posted at appropriate locations at the particular city-owned property and/or operated property or facility. So the City Manager, if the City Manager makes rules and regulations governing a city facility, they have to be made publicly available.
Okay. Okay. I guess I was just confused over if there might be, I was thinking of a park, you know, sign where it says, "We're open until such and such." But I guess we do have signage that has the additional rules and regs. So I was just trying to envision how that was going to operate and...
Mayor President, if I might, so at the promenade, they used to have very specific promulgated rules for the promenade. They were not enacted anywhere else in the city, and those were posted at every entrance. Clearly, it said promulgated rules for the promenade, and then here's 10, 12 additional rules, whatever those, whatever those things were. I will tell you, in addition to that, as it relates to trespassing, before we're able to write trespassing summonses or make any criminal action against, about criminal behavior as far as trespassing, those, the courts require that they are posted. And that's one of the things that we have to show during the court process. Where was this posted? When was this posted? How was it posted? Letter's big enough. Are they, is it, was it one small, you know, sign, you know, 300 feet away? So we have to go into detail about where all that stuff is at, because it's not right for us or fair for us to be able to
Right.
write somebody a summons when they came in over here, and yet, you know, the only sign for that is at, you know, 30 entrances away.
Yeah.
So that is something that the courts, even if we wanted to, which we don't, even if we wanted to do that, the courts don't allow us to do that as far as, and it's got to be, it has to be posted properly for the courts to adhere to that.
And speaking as a former prosecutor, it completely torpedoes and makes your case untenable if you don't have it posted and can't show that the person knew what they were doing. You have to paraphrase Dr. Strangelove, the whole point of such regulations is lost if you keep them a secret.
Right, yeah. Okay. Thank you. For some reason, just in my head, I had only just a small amount that would be posted in my brain, but now, as I was asking the question, I realized there are more.
And we did want to be, we use the term publicly, we want to allow flexibility. We don't know what sort of technology is going to be available in the future. So, but we, it is very, we definitely can't, the whole point of these regulations is to let people know what is and isn't expected. They really are pointless if they're not shouted from the rooftops.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, or Councillor Demat?
I appreciate all the clarifications. To me, this seems like it makes a lot of sense, especially to the point of what the Charter says, that this is what the City Manager's job is to maintain our property and our organization. One question I do have is, like in the parks situation, you know, or in any of them with the designee, I understand the flexibility, but, you know, who, and this is more, I guess, a question for Jody, and I know it could change if you had a different City Manager, but, you know, why the flexibility versus just having you do it and getting advice from your deputies and your department heads? What does the flexibility give you?
In terms of a designee?
Yeah, like, who do you think that you might designate that to, versus just doing it yourself and taking advice from the, you know, who you might pass that down? And the reason I ask is, I understand the questions around the authority. If it was like a citywide, I'd be less comfortable, but still, at the same time, you're still able to enact rules on a good amount of public property, so why not just keep it with the City Manager being the head of the organization?
Mr. Demat, you want to help with that one?
I'll do my best. We've just sort of been on a project lately to add that in every time we encounter it in the code, just to account for the frequent, so not infrequent situation we've encountered over the years where the City Manager is, for one reason or another, unavailable. And we just want to make it clear that in the absence of a City Manager, a designee can do it. It just seems best practice to us to do it that way if it causes any heartburn to the City Council or happened.
I think that makes sense. I just want people to understand it, too, on top of myself. So if I play that out, what you're saying, so for example, for some reason, you were gone for a period of time for family reasons, and one of the deputies was in charge, say, for like three months, then they would be able to do it. It's kind of more the thought versus passing it off to somebody permanently.
Or some other unanticipated, some other event that we can't even predict happening right now. Like I say, it's just sort of been best practice that we, it won't be the first or the last time you've seen that language in codes that are brought before you. It just seems to be the best practice, so we're throwing it in when we, when we can, just to account, to allow for flexibility.
So one example might be, at the very micro level... So one example might be, at the very micro level, Schellenberg Farms, you know, we have, we got a series of vandal, vandalism's on the building, someone stripped away the no trespassing sign, I'm out for the afternoon at a, you know, at a conference or something, I can have a designate go out and repost the site, and it will stand up in court for the time when somebody comes back in and vandalizes it and said, well, yeah, but the city manager didn't put that sign out there, you know, the, the park ranger did, or the, you know, the streets worker did. So I think that what Matt is describing is, the realities of a, of a over 1,000-person organization is that I don't go out and post all these signs myself, and I don't, I think it's just blanket language that allows for the fact that it is, we are a large organization, and others will undertake my, you know, my directions.
I think that's a good point. I guess the other thing that comes to mind, just as you talk through that, is the various different properties, and that, you know, you may have a different expert that would be able to take care of Schellenberg versus one of our public works facilities. So I'm super comfortable with it, but I, you know, make sure that we cover stuff, especially when we're giving authority away.
I could...
Or designating authority, I guess is actually probably more the way I would look at it.
The other one I'd offer, Counselors, for, in the way of an example, is the designate could be helpful if, for example, trespassing became an issue at, out in Strasburg, at the city's biosolids farm, rather than having to have, you know, staff travel out there, a designate potentially could do that on behalf of the manager. Or, you know, if a water treatment plant became a target for trespassing, or tanks of water, you know, I think there might be a role for the Public Works and Utilities Director to facilitate posting of rules on those facilities that, you know, are scattered throughout the city.
Yeah, that's helpful. I guess the other thing that comes to mind that I would say for people to think about as we go through the conversation, though, is all the things that you just mentioned, that those are, we have sensitive facilities, it sounds like we don't have a rule in order to, or a way for the city manager to protect those properties, and that could be really a safety concern for the city. So I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I'll support it.
Counselor Ireland, do you have anything?
I think all the questions were answered, and I, I am in agreement with it, and appreciate the staff for bringing it forward.
Counselor Hahn?
I'm Warren.
Counselor Azadi?
I have a couple of questions. So the first time it was presented to us, it was framed as a way of reducing, the crime wasn't the word that was used, but we, there was questions that were asked, and we got around to the concept of, well, this is really an unhoused thing, where we're trying to align what PRL is able to do with what the rest of the public facilities are able to do, because there's so much unhoused that, but the way it's being framed tonight is, it's not about, from what you've said multiple times, it's, you're framing it as an administrative fix to align the powers of the city manager, which already exists, the authority is already there, so this is not adding anything new to what he's able to do. He is able to do the same things today, it's just not clear in the code, it's not explicit, correct? So it's really, the fact that the authority already exists, criminal activity is already taken care of as well, so this isn't actually changing anything, it's really just building more transparency into what already exists, and putting it in one place so that it's clear and transparent. Is that true or false?
I would say that's true, but if you'll indulge me with a little bit of elaboration on it. It is true, but this will hopefully not only provide clarity, ease of access for people to understand the city manager's authority, but also hopefully save us a little bit of an argument if it ever had to be invoked. Like I said, right now, in order to say, if somebody's, if somebody is, it could, camping is certainly a very good, easy, accessible example, but there could be any number of things a person could do on, outside of one of the PR and, I'm sorry, one of the public works properties, where we really, it's really not okay for someone to be camping. Before, we would have to have the city manager come and post something, and then we would have to have this long, complicated citation as to where we find the interpretation that says the city manager may do this, if for no other reason than absent anybody else can do it. And that is, of course, not the way PRNL does it. I imagine in the city council's conversations before, you were looking at Parks and Rec's specified authority. Very quickly in the discussion, we determined that was probably not the best way to go in terms of enacting similar rules for other non-parks-owned properties, simply because there's so many different types of property, and those properties might come and go. And therefore, we decided this flexible approach would be better, it expands upon, or it clarifies existing authority, and it still retains an awful lot of flexibility, which, and it's something that I've been bugging Dave about for years. So I'll admit to having thrown that in, to, as a potential, something we, a cleanup that we needed for a while. So yes, yes, sir, you're right.
Can I add also, one of the most common things we hear when challenged is, you can't, you can't say, "I can't come in here," because this is not private property, it's public property, it's owned by the city, and therefore it's public. And the courts have upheld in City Hall, for example, if we sign it as a staff-owned area, that means you can't, you can't come in there, and it's, those were driven by security upgrades. But that was, that's a great example of, many people believe if the city owns property, that it's public, and that we can just access it as though we would access a park at 2:00 in the afternoon, even if it's a drinking water, treatment facility, control room, right? That's a public property, I can go in there and I can, you know, I could walk around. And so from, from my perspective, it's probably the most consistent thing I've heard over the years, which is, I don't know, if you haven't posted that, I can't be in here, and what authority do you have to not allow me to come into something that I own as a taxpayer? So that's, that's typically, and I think these clarify, this clarification would be very helpful for all staff to say, understood, it's a city-owned asset, but this is posted as no access, you know, for whatever reason, typically security reasons.
Could I add to that also? The, you know, the previous discussions that we've had on the subject, I heard a question of what tools might be available to address certain issues. And I think what's being proposed by staff tonight is a tool that would be of general applicability throughout the city, which would just be a best practice, as Mr. Munch points out, many cities around us have similar provisions that make it very explicit that the city manager has the authority to promulgate regulations and rules regarding their city's facilities. I think that that rule of general applicability would be a useful one in Westminster, and I think that's why staff is proposing it for your consideration. And if, you know, at the conclusion of this discussion, if council directs, you know, staff can certainly bring this forward for your consideration for first reading.
And, and I wanted to just clarify that, that is very different than how it was framed to us the first time, right? This is an administrative change, really, for all the things that you've mentioned.
Yes, sir, and it does encompass, or it, it's, it will be helpful in areas completely separate from the conversation you were having before. I think, I think when we get people like First Amendment auditors coming through, I think this will be helpful, not only in clarifying, in helping us, but also helping them to understand just what city manager was saying. Not, not everything that is publicly owned is necessarily there for the public. A lot of it has a, it has a purpose to make government run sometimes, and sometimes that requires...
Yeah.
I think it will be helpful for the city, and also helpful for those who want to test to make sure we're doing the right thing.
And, and there is criminal activity that has happened in, like, the, in our public water assets, for example, right, that this would help with. And I'm saying this out loud, because if anyone's listening, you know, people, as they, as they look at this and compare it to how it was discussed the first time, this is very much clearer and better, and it's actually a best practice, like you said, for criminal activity, which is not the unhoused. Because we do not, we are not equating the unhoused with criminal activity. This is really to prevent any criminal activity that could occur.
Yes, sir.
And other things, and to clarify the delegation of the city manager.
Yes, sir. And in that context, if someone was to break into one of our water treatment facilities and do something, they would be committing any number of crimes independent of this. But what this will allow to do is, it can allow the city manager, just off the top of my head, to set a buffer of, you know, a sort of escalation in space, that he could pass regulations that say, okay, well, no, it's a, it's a civil infraction for you to, you're not supposed to be here, instead of a sign, a, a level where some, that can sort of like gently push someone off. If someone's intent upon committing a crime, they'll, they'll do what they'll do, and the police will do what they do. But this will help de-escalate things, or it will give another tool for de-escalation. Really, it's, it's, we were hoping to use it as a tremendously flexible tool that can hopefully stop a lot of fights before they start.
Yeah, and I support this, but my only concern is, you know, we, we love Jody, and he'll have the delegation of doing this, but in future, you know, it could be anyone in that seat that will, that may, but, but to Mayor's point, it's still gonna be council, future councils that will have the final evaluation of city manager, so eventually, but there is that subjectiveness, that I don't like the concept of fining, fining the unhoused if they're in there. I don't foresee Jody ever doing that, or anyone in staff doing that, like, as their first step of the escalation process, but that's a concern, because that makes no sense to find people who don't have money.
And Counselor, we agree with you, in practice, we don't do that. The Rangers do not do that, and I heard Counselor Carmelia is concerned too, so I just want to be abundantly clear, we are not fining the unhoused.
Thank you.
Counselor, sorry, if I could add to both your points, one other thing I would add there, is if there is a situation where there is a failure to pay fines, that ends up in front of the municipal judge, who has that ultimate authority over those fines, what happens to that individual, as well as sealing those records? So know that the fail-safe, if all else fails in this process, the judge is there and gets to make that determination, as well as sealing those records, so that the, if it's deemed or viewed through the lens of the person experiencing homelessness, it's not a punishment that's gonna hang on to them forever. The judge will have that ultimate authority, which is what the, what the judge does, it's not what the police do, it's not what Parks does. The judge will have that ultimate authority, and has that as, as one of your employees.
Thank God, we love our judge too. We have such great employees. Thank you.
Counselor Carmelia, were you a yes, or where are you at?
Thank you. So this is really, really helpful, I appreciate the conversation, and thank you, Counselor Azadi, for asking exactly those questions that were on my mind, because where we started and where we are at are two very different places. I appreciate, I mean, I absolutely appreciate security, and I think we all do, but I bring up security a lot, and so I'm absolutely for that, I'm definitely for clarifying code. And so overall, I will say, I support it. And I just want to be clear to the concerns just mentioned, that I think the real goal is we're trying to prevent anyone ending up in jail, which just costs them more. So if they have to go to jail to get to the judge, that's still a concern, and so, but you're hearing our concerns, and so I'm hoping that they will be dealt with, and I'm hoping that we are understanding that we need to assign them to a homeless navigator first, you know, do our due diligence in our processes, right? That's why we have our continuum of compassion, making sure that we go down all of their roads to help them be a contributing member of our society, before we end up punishing them, which ends up costing us anyway. So that's just, you know, so that we're all clear as to why I was concerned, but it does make sense, seeing as if we have a similar ordinance for our PRL, so, thank you so much.
Mayor President?
I do feel the same way about the finding and where it could be, but I also was just going to request that, one, I'm a yes, but that we could get this, to the extent possible, I know we'll have a lot of different rules, but to have somewhere on the website where we're clear about how we're approaching city facilities.
Counselor Demat?
I just want to share my perspective a little bit on, it's not necessarily homeless, but I want to make sure that I'm on the record of my view. My view is, we're protecting the property, we're protecting our water plant, and quite frankly, I feel bad, I was part of creating the continuum of compassion that we have today, but at the end of the day, if you're breaking the law, or you're damaging private property, or you're making safety concerns for our properties, therefore our citizens, that's a problem for me. So I don't, I mean, I have empathy and compassion for people who are in that situation, however, if they're doing things that are beyond the law, then we should hold them responsible, just like we would for you, or I, or anybody else in the city. So I, you know, I just want to go on the record, because I know that we seem to go down that road a lot, and I can tell you that mostly constituents that I talk to, that's how they feel, they want to make sure that we're upholding the law for everybody. Obviously, you know, to the courts, in working with folks, where they're at, and something that makes sense for their situation in terms of punishment, I'm all for that. I don't, I think the goal always, I've heard this said back since Lee Burke was the chief, the goal with most of the things that we do as a city is to correct bad behavior. So, you know, I want to, you know, just go on the record saying that that's my perspective of it.
I haven't spoken yet, but I'm number seven to say yes, so you have the seven of us saying yes. And appreciate you going back and, and looking at the whole picture, not just one subject area, but addressing all of it. So I think this is a great way to do it, I appreciate your time, and I know it was a lot of collaboration, and thank you for keep bugging.
You got your wish.
So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank city attorney, park library director, and the police chief, this was an intensely collaborated solution, and Counselor Azadi put it in words first, which was, it ended up being a much more elegant, more transparent, clearer solution than that which originally initiated the discussion and the direction, with the result that it, that it is a cleaner solution for so many different areas of the city. And I would also emphasize, there's a reason in the, in the recommended action that it's embedded with our Ranger team, so that's the resource-rich, softer side of our organization, it's not the criminal side of our organization. Those folks are there to assist people in accessing resources, and I just want to emphasize that for our community that's also listening. The track record with Parks, Rec, and Libraries is of 100, in the case of our, of our unhoused community, of 122 encampments that were addressed with our Rangers and our Navigators, only two of those situations were not able to be resolved through access to resources through our continuum of compassion. I just want to emphasize that, that, those numbers are not gonna change with, with what council's directed tonight. So the, the success rate is very, very high through this team to get folks access to those resources. And council has provided the leadership and the resources to make sure that we have the right navigator staff out there, and the Ranger staff as well. So thank you.
Thank you all. Next up is Jefferson County Regional Approach to Cold Weather Sheltering.
Eric is gonna stay with us on this one, and, and talk about the follow-up to the Jefferson County Spring Forum on homeless, sorry, on, on cold weather sheltering that we hosted at the Westview Recreation Center recently. And at that discussion, city council gave the direction in the, in the forum, that we were really doing, we were out in front with respect to our cold weather response, the MAC, and our voucher program, and that we felt pretty confident that we could continue with that and still be out in front. Council also directed that night, or that afternoon, for the city manager to go and have discussions, ongoing discussions with the other Jefferson County managers, and the results of those discussions is what's presented to you tonight. And Eric is here to provide details and background, if you, if you need them. The, what you see tonight is different than what we presented as a city at that forum as our preferred approach, but I think it's a better approach, and I wanted to explain why. Taking the regional approach, when the city of Westminster is a leader, is helpful to the other cities, because this is a regional issue. They appreciate what we've done, as directed, we've, we've now included the MAC and our own voucher program in the accounting regionally, and, and would be poised to benefit from a two-way flow of resources when that tide changes, and I can tell you, it will change with, with this issue and unhoused, that, you know, they don't track our municipal boundaries, they don't need to, we don't want them to, you know, we want them to access resources no matter what city they're in. So on that basis, I'm advancing to you a different recommendation, which is for us to participate in a regional IGA with our Jefferson County jurisdictional partners, and that's before you, the, the cost impact this year to us is nominal, there is a small dollar amount, it's, we can afford it within our existing budgets, so there's no need for a supplemental appropriation or a change of funding, that funding is there. But I just wanted to, to tell you, from the manager's... But I just wanted to, to tell you, from the manager's perspective in those other cities, this is a very important leadership role for the city of Westminster, if you so choose to go in that direction. Otherwise, it would be entirely consistent to say, you know what, we've, we're doing okay this year, you know, you do the IGA without Westminster this year, and we'll, we'll come back to the table next year. So you do have options, those two options tonight, but I wanted to present to you one that was my recommendation based on the work with the other city managers.
Welcome.
Thank you, sorry you're stuck with me, but on the positives, Senior Management Analyst Kate Skarbeck, who leads our Navigator team, and when you talk about collaboration, I, I think I exceeded 100 different partners in the region that Kate and her team collaborate with, so, yes, we're, we're all about that. Once again, in the spirit of this evening and, and other weighty topics, no presentation, we'll just be, be brief and just highlight a few things that were in the staff report, and if there are questions, more in-depth detail, we have our subject matter expert, and Kate, Kate has been in, in close contact with our partners. So, so as you'll recall, many of you were at the, the forum, five options were presented, it's always an uncomfortable thing when everyone else in the room chooses a different option, and we're like, oh, well, hey, we could do these other two, but just for, for the sake of, of the, the good here, you know, Westminster, of course, is in a somewhat unique position compared to the other Jefferson County municipalities, because we have the good fortune of a very strong partnership with Adams County and Almost Home nonprofit, as, as a, as a approach to our cold weather sheltering, and with, with your direction and appropriations, and granted, I'm a bit biased, working for the city, but we're in a very strong position to do our best to, to respond to our specific needs. So, you know, we were looking at a, a county-only option for cold weather sheltering, you know, different existing facilities were thrown in the works, but as, as Manager Andrews pointed out, you gave him the direction and authority to, to further collaborate with the other city managers. What we have before you now is this, details are still being developed, but, but for the, the sake of a direction this evening, roughly a $2 million commitment for Jefferson County and municipalities for next season's cold weather sheltering. The, there's been a lot of back and forth on methodology for cost share, where things landed at this point is per residential population. Westminster's slice of that pie for Jefferson County is 8%, so that leads to a $164,720 commitment. In the staff report, we're, we're seeking authorization for the, the city manager for $175,000, just to provide a little contingency there, knowing negotiations and processes still in play. As Manager Andrews alluded to, and, and Kate Skarbeck has, has been in the mix for us, in this approach, we want to make sure that extreme weather sheltering at the MAC is accounted for. Last year, with activations, that was about a $69,000 cost. Looking at Westminster-specific paid vouchers for unhoused with Jefferson County ties, just a snapshot in time, looking at last year's data, a vast majority of our challenges on the Adams County side. So, you know, these numbers may, may seem low, but, but they're legit. There were, you know, roughly taking seven individuals with Jefferson County ties housed per evening of severe weather activation. Last year, that, that number was 58 per, per swap, so taking those, the seven Westminster-specific individuals with Jeffco ties, 58 nights of activation, roughly $104 per night is, is our cost, so that, that, it's about $40,000. So 40,000, 69,000 of, of city-provided resources last year is what would be contemplated in being covered in this IGA, in the $2 million. So that, that's, that's 109,000, so that leaves about, depending where things lie, 55 to $65,000 to, to the good of the whole. Part of this is, is a, you know, as, as Manager Andrews alluded to, needs, challenges ebb and flow year to year, it's certainly a regional approach to a regional problem, and as, as many of you were directly engaged with, you know, there's still a, a lot of interest around having a seat at the table for a second Navigation Transition Center in Jefferson County. You know, there is the Lakewood Navigation Center, this, this participation may or may not provide Kate and her team some, some access to that center. You know, we won't rehash where we're at with the Early College of Arvada, but we know that, that is not proceeding. So while this, and this is just a one-year agreement for, 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 you know, your direction to, to provide staff, and, you know, the, the larger challenges, the longer term, will be contemplated to, to come, but this is, this is a, a step towards more formalized regional collaboration with, with Jefferson County. And, and with that, we'll, we'll open it up to your questions.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and for the work, city manager, on collaborating. Did you also, did that also include HOBE in your collaboration, or just these city managers?
The city managers and the county, and the county was present, so, yep.
My first question, so you said 8% of that 2 million, so the $164,000 commitment for Westy, right? But we are including, so the benefit for us, just to say out loud, is that we are including the MAC in this kind of shared, so the 104K that we spend on the MAC, that's now part of the 2 million commitment, that's kind of spread over across all the other cities, which saves us, so my question is, what is the net gain for us, for Westy, that dollar gain?
Good question.
Because now we're, we've cut our MAC costs by joining this. If we join this, we would be cutting the MAC cost.
Yeah, so, so to be clear, you know, the total contribution from Westminster under the current cost share based on population is 8%. Our total share, including in-kind contributions, is $165,000 roughly, so we would deduct from that the MAC that we already contribute, and the vouchering program that Mr. Otzelberger described. So we would, in this year, have a net pay into that regional cost share of, of about 55 to $65,000, and that would, that would be money that would go to the regional approach. So it does take into account dollar for dollar what we're already doing at the MAC, and what we're already doing for voucher programs, so we're not cutting a check to that regional approach for 165,000, it's only the delta from what we're already doing, which is about 55 to $65,000.
And if we hadn't included the MAC in this IGA, we would have to pay this 164, correct?
Correct.
So it's saving us, so joining is great for the reasons that you mentioned, because it's a regional problem, right? It's not a Westminster problem, and all those other reasons, but we are actually, but the fact that we've included the MAC in this, which wasn't part of Jeffco's plan, right? Jody negotiated that in, I'm just saying this out loud, so it's clear that it's a huge benefit for us, that we are now part, that we would be part of a regional collaboration that could be long-term, yes, it's a one-year deal, right? But us joining is much lower than the other cities joining, from a financial commitment standpoint, because of this negotiation, so thanks for that, Jody. And my other question is, what are, what's the share of the other cities? Do you have a list of what the other cities are?
Yes, so if we can look at page three of the council memo, I, you know, I'll run through them. So Jefferson County is in with the largest amount of money to the regional approach, and that is very positive, you know, for the, for the jurisdictional cities. So Jefferson County is just over $720,000. Arvada would be in for $432,000. Edgewater, very small, just under $21,000. Golden, almost $62,000. Lakewood, $556,000. As we mentioned, Westminster, 165,000, but that includes a credit, deducted from that would be the credit for the MAC and our cold shelter, and our voucher program, and then Wheat Ridge would be about $103,000, and that's the, just over 2 million that Mr. Otzelberger referenced, that's, that would be the city shares under this year's agreement. So when you look at the numbers, Westminster's in, not, not a big contributor compared to, say, a, a Lakewood, or the county itself, or, or the, or Arvada. And I would emphasize the second thing that Mr. Otzelberger said, is that this sets up a framework of negotiation with our partners around, for specifically, a second Navigation Center. It was originally, and Council knows, it was originally conceived to be in Arvada, that's not progressed, but the, but the, the cities are not giving up on there being a second Navigation Center, so this is the framework by which that would also be provided in the future, if we so chose.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Counselor Carmelia.
I'll say, I am really grateful to how creative and innovative you have been with this approach. Thank you for taking the lead on this. Us being proactive, and then setting us to be the leader on this agreement, means that we now have more input to some of Counselor Azadi's points just now, but it also means that we get to frame how we want to see this go forward, and I love that there's a one-year, you know, stipulation, and then we see how it goes, and then we go from there. And it sets us up, I think, for success in the future, because collaboration is key in this, especially in this issue, but in many of the issues we talk about with transit and housing, but especially around the unhoused, because any policy we set forth in this city will impact our neighbors, and vice versa. So if we become more strict on one area, or we become, we suddenly provide housing, you know, what I've heard, a concern again and again is, oh, we're going to invite everyone. There's many arguments around that. However, this sets us, this completely evades that, right? We are working with our neighbors, and not only are we working with them, we are holding their hand and saying, hey, we are offering all of this, and we're taking the lead, and we will go forward with you because we have this to offer. And so I just think that this is incredible, and I'm really, really grateful for you for coming up with this, and this is exactly what we need more of, is collaboration with our neighbors, because otherwise, none of us will succeed, and the unhoused problem is only going to get worse, I want to voice that out loud. We have all seen the numbers, we all know where we are in the economy, this is something we have to be proactive about, because it will only get worse, and so we need to be proactive now, and for us to spend 55 to 60K to go into something is monumental and huge as an IGA, you know, with all of the county, which is something I've been hoping and asking for, for I don't even know how long, you know? I'll, I'll say this again, I said it a long time ago, but one of the many reasons I ran is years ago, I went to the city and said, hey, what do we do about the unhoused, what, how can I help? And I was told, the county handles that. And so I went to the county, and I said, hey, Jeffco, what do I do, how can I help? There are no shelters between Denver and Boulder, and they said, you let your city handle that, we don't do that, we're not handling that, right? And so now, we are working with the county, which they have finally shown initiative, and we are not just agreeing to go along with it, but we're taking that by the hand. So I am just really, really grateful, thank you, we're doing it the right way.
Mayor Protem.
Just a clarification on, so this is what we spend in Jefferson County, not what, also what we spend in Adams County, so I just want to make, ensure that that's clear, that because we still have money that we're putting towards these services, that it, it's not just 109,000 that we were spending last year. Can you stand on that a little bit?
Yes, Mayor Protem, and, and just to be clear, Kate Skarbeck working on our behalf, and, and the, the data going into this is from last season, but that, that is just Jefferson County-specific for Westminster-funded hotel nights, and then those MAC costs, so that's just a, a slice of the pie. I do have some overall budget numbers that kind of roll up from, from everything we do, but, you know, our total spend for, for everything is closer to $1 million. So it, it's just, and, and, and if you'd like, Kate could speak to, a little bit to the, the Adams County side of the house with severe weather sheltering, if that's desired.
Well, I think just, you know, I think helping people to understand that there's, that this is not the total, because it's been, you know, if, if they're thinking about, well, I thought we put more money towards vouchers in the budget last year, so maybe, yeah, Kate, if you have just some broad numbers, I don't want you to go into excessive detail, but...
Certainly. What we're using to calculate this is, you're familiar with the annual point in time that's nationally conducted, and on this January's 2025 point in time, we had roughly, we had seven people in hotels paid for by Westminster that had Jefferson County ties. And so we're using that data to extrapolate for the 58 nights that swap activated, because we're not tracking exactly, some nights we might have 11 people with Jefferson County ties, and only 17 with Adams County ties that we were placing in hotels paid for by Westminster. So this is focusing solely, the hotel voucher equation focuses solely on those, that portion of our clients that were in hotels for severe weather nights this last cold weather season. And part of the fun of it all is that the cold weather season, of course, spans budget years, since ours are calendar years, but the, but, but the cold weather season actually usually starts in early to mid-October, and then ends in mid to late April, and sometimes early May.
For one year, it was in June. Okay, so the additional 55 to 65,000 that we'd be putting into the Jefferson County side in association with this IGA, provides us with broader access to their services? What do we, what do we get out of that?
Largely, yes, in the long run, and in the short run, it provides stabilization, because this would help provide sheltering for all of Jefferson County municipalities across the region, so that if somebody's currently staying in Arvada or Wheat Ridge, they don't feel compelled to come up to Westminster, because we have hotel stays and the rest of the county does not.
Is there anything that would be in the IGA that would, and that somehow assert the use of those, that 55, you know, if we wouldn't have somebody turned away, or we'd get additional benefits out of those dollars? Or you're just saying it just goes into a regional pool to...
You know, I can, at being at the table, it does go into the regional collective pool. Westminster will never worry about whether a person has that Adams County or Jefferson County ties, they will have this, always have the same access to resources, and I think what Kate is describing is that would now be the case regionally. So they're not going, we're not going to be concerned that one of our unhoused persons is better served at the Lakewood facility, that's where they may end up, for example, getting the best access, or a hotel in, in Arvada might be a better solution for them. So what that, in effect, buys us into the regional approach, so we actually, it's almost the opposite, we become less concerned about where individuals have ties to, and more concerned about them getting to the resources quicker and more efficiently.
I ask, I mean, I saw the breakdown of everything that is essentially paying towards, so there's, there's no, with the additional dollars that would be going in, there's nothing that would be kind of saving towards, like, another facility that would have to be sort of on top of the cost?
Correct, Mayor Protem, and I, and Manager Andrews and Kate Skarbeck can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the intent behind this agreement is, is utilizing the best data and utilization in, in the most recent season, to, to make some intelligent assumptions, understanding that depending how the cold weather season goes, and none of us know what the weather is going to be like, you know, I, I believe the intent is that everyone's paying in an adequate amount to fund the need that's there, but, you know, there might be some reconciliation, or there could, one way or another, there could be savings and then redistribution, or, you know, if, if, if this agreement goes forth, does that carry forward to the other next year? So, so there, you know, some of those mechanics still need to be worked out.
Okay. So, yes, it would, it would be helpful to couch this with our Adams County contributions and how that fits into the budget overall, and, because it, I, I like the idea that we're engaging regionally, and this is a regional approach, and I understand that we're not as big of a contributor as some of our neighboring communities, but it's also just something for us to consider in the scheme of costs that we're going to be putting towards all things. So I'm definitely pretty open to this, though.
Counselor Ireland, any questions?
Oh, she appears as she's dropped off. Oh, let me see if I can contact her. Counselor Ha?
I think the collaboration is great and we're going for it.
Counselor Ma?
I appreciate the many, many years of working on this, especially from Kate and Parks and Rec. You know, this is something that you've worked on since I've been here. So I appreciate that. And I think the thing that's best in my mind is with that regional approach is that we're not the only ones doing it because that does bring more homeless here because it's where the resources are. So that ends up being more of a problem for our community that way. So addressing the problem regionally is something we've always talked about. So this is a good approach and it's not costing us an arm and a leg to do it.
I agree. We have so many partnerships with so many folks out there and I know in so many different ways and we just know, I mean, that's the reason why we are liaisons to a whole bunch of things because whether it's transportation or Dr. Cog or whatever, there's those partnerships and you just have to have them for some of the big issues and this is certainly one. And we're the unique ones that are in two counties. I know Arvada has a sliver of Adams, but nothing very big. So being at that meeting and hearing and being that lone wolf of when those things didn't seem to be okay with us, but you're sitting at the table, you made the right decision, I think, being that partner and them helping understand the things we have to go through, maybe not all of them have to, is important for them to listen to too. So thanks. Can we get a?
No. After this item, can we take a little break to try to work?
Yeah. Okay. So you've got six of us. I don't know what Counselor Ha would say, so, but thanks.
Counselor Ireland.
Counselor Ireland, I'm sorry. Counselor Ireland, and we'll try and get her on and one-on-one or whatever you guys can discuss and know whatever her concerns or questions were.
Good.
Okay, we'll take a break. Get tech.
If we're all back and in place, welcome.
Mayor, thank you. If I could introduce, and then we'll jump right into item 3B, which is emergency services and neighborhood streets polling results and next steps. Will be led by Chris Lindsay, our Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff. I do want to point out before we begin that we also have with us tonight August Rashi of Local 2889 of our IAFF, which is our local fire union. They're here with us this evening as well as Jamie Chavez. Jamie, thank you for being here. Jamie is President and CEO of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, so two key stakeholders in this discussion. And I want to thank them both for being here tonight. I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Jody. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this evening. I have with me at the head of the table here Brian Winger and David Flaherty of Magellan Strategies to talk about the voter survey that the city undertook the last couple of weeks. You've seen them a couple of times as we worked through the questions and we're excited to share with you tonight some very strong results that staff has been able to preview around the ballot questions. We've seen the most positive results around the sales tax question at 0.35%. And we're excited to share those with you and hear your feedback in terms of the next steps around the potential ballot initiative. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
And as Ryan begins, Deputy Manager, City Manager Opie has emailed around to all of you, primarily for the benefit of Counselor Ireland, tonight's presentation. So Counselor Ireland, you may not be able to see it all remotely because we do cut out for when people are talking. So you have on your laptop or computer access to that presentation and any member of council here as well, if you have your laptops or iPads with you. And, sorry, to point out, you also have printed copies at the table, which is why we emailed it also. All right.
Thanks, Jody, and thank you all. Good to see you again. We do have about 50 slides here, so we're going to move through this very quickly, just in the interest of time and so we can have plenty of time to discuss afterwards. But again, just for those who aren't familiar with the methodology, here you see on this slide an example of the text message that went out to a sample of registered voters within the city of Westminster. We interviewed, completed interviews with 1,506 registered voters over the period from the 24th through the 30th. So lots of, lot of activity during that week, as I'm sure you all are well aware of. That gives us a margin of error of 2.5%. So feeling very confident in the results moving forward, but the most important thing is that these are weighted to reflect likely odd-year election turnout in Westminster. So just as a refresher, here's a little bit of what that looks like. We always point out the primary difference is in that age group section there. When you have an odd-year election, turnout is going to be quite a bit older in terms of those 55 and older. You see there, it's going to be somewhere around 55%, whereas in a presidential year like last year, it's only going to be around 38%. So that's really the key difference between an odd and an even year for what it's worth. And these results are weighted to reflect odd-year turnout. So just a refresher on what the objectives of the survey were. We're measuring support and opposition to two different kind of proposals. One was a 0.35% sales tax increase. The second was a combination property tax increase with a 0.25 sales tax increase. And the survey educated respondents about the needs of both the fire department as well as the city's approach to street maintenance and public works as regarding streets. And the survey also measured approval ratings for Westminster as a whole as well as the fire department and public works. And just some really high-level key findings that we found. Support for the 0.35% sales tax increase increases from 61% on the uninformed, simply meaning before they had any more information, to 66% with 23% voting no, 11% undecided. And that 66% number is significantly higher than what we found for support for the combination property and sales tax. So the way we structured that question, as you'll see here towards the end of the presentation, is we presented both options and said, if these were both on the ballot, how would you vote? Because there wasn't a scenario where we're going to run with one or the other of those. And so we asked them, how would you vote if both were on the ballot? 32% would vote yes on both measures. That was the largest number. Another 20% would vote yes on the sales tax, but not on the property tax. And also there was a higher number of undecided, 17%, when you're talking about the combination of the two. The other thing to point out is that just the city in general, as well as the fire department and public works are rated and well-liked by majority of respondents, which is in kind of important context to know, getting into the survey. So with that, we'll start with the city in general. Generally speaking, do you approve or disapprove of the job the city's doing with services, programs, initiatives? 70% approve, only 15% disapprove, 15% no opinion. I'm not going to spend hardly any time on the demographic subgroups, again, just in the interest of time, but this is really, no red flags here at all. 70% is an incredibly strong job approval for any kind of government organization. 20% strongly approved, 50% somewhat approved. This is a great place to start as a city. We then asked, what are the top two or three issues or problems you think the city should be addressing the most? This is obviously, some of these issues are not relevant to what we're all talking This is obviously, some of these issues are not relevant to what we're ultimately going to get into in the survey, but we wanted to take the opportunity to see what was top of mind for folks as they were taking the survey. And interestingly enough, what pops up near the top is street and road conditions. So this idea that roads are deteriorating while maintenance is inconsistent. Also homelessness and public safety. These are the kind of the top five themes. Water costs and infrastructure, crime and law enforcement, and then overdevelopment and housing density. So obviously, some of this is related to the, you know, the subject matter of the survey. Some of it is not. But just for you all's benefit, those are the top five themes that came out of the survey. Then do you agree or disagree with the following statement? The city of Westminster is fiscally responsible and spends taxpayer money wisely. 58% is a very strong measurement here. We ask this question in pretty much every, you know, survey we do for local government entities. And really, what you're looking for is a two-to-one ratio between agree, disagree. As long as you're hitting two-to-one, that's a good place to be. This one is nearly three-to-one. So to have 58% agree, only 20% disagree, is again, just a strong place to be as a city. Moving on to specifically measurements about the fire department. And again, this is all before we're mentioning any kind of tax increase, any specifics. How familiar are you with the fire department and the services it provides? So 62% at least somewhat familiar, 17% very familiar, 45% somewhat familiar. What I always say about this one is, you know, 26%, because we ask, we do a lot of work for fire protection districts and fire departments and ask those questions. This doesn't mean that 26% aren't aware of what the fire department does. A lot of people just read this, read this question and think, well, I haven't interacted with the fire department anytime recently, so I'm going to say I'm not familiar. It's not that they're unfamiliar generally with what you do. It's just that they don't really have a frame of reference personally. So again, this is, this is a good place to be, where 62% are at least somewhat familiar with the services the department provides. The job approval for the fire department specifically is even higher. 77% approve, only 2% disapprove, 21% no opinion. Again, that's a lot of folks that probably just don't, don't think they have enough context to answer. So that's a strong place to be as well. And the fire department is fiscally responsible and spends taxpayer money wisely. Again, we have 59% agree, only 4% finding a reason to disagree, and then a large number, 37% with no opinion on this question. Moving on to the section about public works. Do you approve or disapprove of the job the Westminster Public Works and Utilities Department is doing in maintaining neighborhood streets and roads? And that's important. We kind of added that last part to let them know that we're specifically talking about streets and roads and not anything else that the work Public Works and Utilities Department may be doing. 57% approve, 39% disapprove. Again, so we have a strong majority there who approve of the job they're doing. Again, good place to be. Do you agree with that the Public Works and Utilities Department is fiscally responsible? Same question we had asked before for the city and the fire department. 47% agree, 30% disagree, 23% no opinion. So we're not hitting 50% here, but actually, for a lot of our, you know, government clients, it's, it's kind of unusual to hit over 50% here. So again, and we're also not hitting the two-to-one ratio. That's fine. It's still 47% agree, 30% disagree. It's, it's not uncommon when we're talking about streets. Everyone can kind of think of a street that they're unhappy with and point to, oh yeah, they must, you know, they could be doing a better job. So again, this is not a real red flag. If these numbers were completely upside down, it would be a concern. We also wanted to ask, how would you rate the condition of neighborhood streets, non-neighborhood streets and sidewalks? And what's interesting to me is that these are all basically the same. That there's not, you know, they're not making a huge distinction. Well, I love the sidewalks, but I hate the neighborhood streets, or vice, or vice versa. So yeah, we're talking roughly a third saying fair. Roughly one in five or just under one in five are saying poor. So when we're talking about, you know, ballot content that will address street maintenance, this is, you know, a fairly encouraging thing. You may have a group of folks saying, yep, we need it, right? And so that's just something to kind of remember as we get on into the rest of the survey. And this is a question that is always interesting to ask as well. And again, we ask this for pretty much every survey we do, especially when it's regarding a ballot measure, because we want to get a sense of, do the respondents believe that the city already has the financial resources necessary to solve whatever the problem is? In this case, adequately maintaining, repairing, and improving streets, roads, and sidewalks. 54% say yes, 24% say no, 22% no opinion. So that's a little bit of a cause for concern. You have over 50% saying, yep, the city should already have what they need. And that would seem to suggest, hey, they may be less open to any kind of revenue increase. We'll see, you know, later on the survey. That's not necessarily the case. But, you know, you would hope, or, you know, ideally, this number would be under 50. It's like, okay, we, we already have some broad-based agreement that the city does need to raise revenue for something like this. So kind of a mixed bag is in terms of the results of this question, which we can talk about later. And then we provided the respondents with this simple information. City's considering, but has not yet decided to place a ballot measure before voters. Here's where to go towards. Operations and infrastructure for the fire department. Maintenance for cities' neighborhood streets and roads. Your participation will strongly influence the decision, so let's continue. And that's kind of getting cut off there at the top. But you see, we say one ballot measure being considered reads as follows. And we have the exact ballot language there. And I think we talked about this, the last time we were in here. We do find whenever it's possible, it's best to test the exact ballot language, because that's what they're going to see on the ballot. And so it just helps to provide a little bit more accurate measurement, because it's what they're going to see, and all its potentially confusing, you know, ballot language. Here's how they responded to that language. 61% would vote yes, 30% would vote no, 9% undecided. So the largest group there is in that probably yes. You see there in the box, 35%. Another 26% definitely, would definitely vote yes and approve. So again, this is a strong place to start. Really, in any pre-election polling, we're kind of looking at 60 as kind of like a benchmark that we're looking for. And this one just barely does get there at 61%, just simply because, whether it's a crowded ballot, economic downturn, just all kinds of factors that are outside of the city's control that may materialize in November. So this is a really strong place to start. You see over there on the left, among all of these subgroups, all of them are at least 50% or higher in support of this 0.35% sales tax. Now we get into the sharing of information with respondents. And we ask, after reading each piece of information, indicate if you're more likely to vote yes or more likely to vote no. And these are going to be ranked in terms of how likely they were to move respondents. Not surprisingly at all, 78% are more likely to approve. Understanding this kind of context in terms of the industry standard for a fire station to an emergency scene. And describing the calls, describing the impact of the ballot measure, allowing the fire department to build this new central station, what it would mean. Maintaining or improving response times. Anytime we do work for fire districts or fire departments, response time is overwhelmingly something that people are understanding to be crucial for the department. And so when we're saying, hey, this is why this is important, this is the impact it would have, this is a really strong piece of information. Oh, looks like that's, I'm not sure what's going on there. But this is basically a slide that we shared, letting them know, and yeah, it might, I'm hoping it printed off better in your print-offs there. Gotcha. So at current funding levels, Westminster's neighborhood streets will continue to decline, may not be able to maintain at the current fair condition. So sharing this slide with them from a previous presentation, 75% are more likely to approve. And this kind of tracks with what we saw in terms of, yeah, there's a, there's, you know, a fairly large number of people that rate the streets as either fair or poor. And so this is kind of justifying, okay, yep, let's, let's find a way to solve that and helping them to understand that at current funding levels, it's not going to be possible. The next two pieces of information that tested pretty well, something like wildfire mitigation, which also tested very well in our survey last year, not surprisingly. It's something that, obviously, the 2021 Marshall Fire just kind of awoke everyone along the front range to the potential for these kind of events happening. And also call volume. Again, that's, I mentioned response times. It's response times and call volume. Those are always going to be part of the story. But what's significant here is that the city can demonstrate that call volumes have more than doubled, even when controlling for population growth. And so folks are trying to, are, we're trying to help them to understand why there is this need for this constant investment in not just operations, but infrastructure for the fire department. Along those same lines, we shared this map with them, and that shows the proposed new Station 7. And just talked about the impact of adding that station, helping maintain those response times, that coverage in the center of the city, and again, addressing that growing number of calls. 73% more likely to approve. So a lot of folks clearly, you know, it doesn't mean that they weren't familiar with these things, because I'm sure even some of them are remembering this conversation from last year. But it's moving the needle. You can really see with, with all of these messages so far. You know, the, the other piece of information that we shared about the street maintenance is just this total street approach. This idea that we're going to use, it encompasses asphalt and pavement, sidewalks, curbs, gutters. Just trying to help them understand, we're not just talking about potholes. We're talking about a holistic approach. 71% more likely to approve upon learning about that approach. Also, we shared a message just basically about the work that the city has done to close that funding gap for emergency services and streets. Even since last year, the city has continued working towards that goal and is in fact going to build a new fire station and the training center without using taxpayer money. So the city is holding staffing levels flat by restructuring 30 positions. All just trying to tell the story of the, the work that the city is constantly doing in this area. 68% more likely to approve. You know, this one, I would say is, the reason it's not kind of up in the 70s, it is a little bit in the weeds. You're asking them to, you know, read and understand a little bit more of the story. But still, it's not bad. And then also in terms of the fire department and comparing the city of Westminster to its neighbors. So this is a piece that I'm sure a lot of folks aren't familiar with and don't have this kind of recall at the top of their head. But this idea that the amount of property taxes that Westminster homeowners pay compared to other cities is significantly different and lower. So two-thirds are more likely to approve knowing that. And then the last piece is, it's not really something that's necessarily meant to, you know, convince voters. It's just more educational. It's, it's the idea that the department operates six fire stations. Here's the locations, 114,000 residents, 153 full and part-time employees. So even just knowing that, even trying to get them to understand the scope of the work that the fire department does, two-thirds are more likely to approve. Thank you for taking the time to learn about, to, to read through all these pieces of information, to learn why this is being considered. Now we're going to have them reread the exact same language from before. So 12.5 million annually, 0.35 with 0.10 expiring on January 1st, 2051. For these four kind of bullet points, what do you think? 66% would vote yes, 23 no, 11% undecided. So you can really see the movement here is really just 5% movement in favor of those who vote yes and approve. And undecided grows by 2%. So we're moving even more of those no voters. Even if they're not quite into yes, we're moving them into undecided. So a five-point movement is pretty solid. You kind of see the cumulative effect of all of that information in terms of how it can move voters and how it can cause them to, you know, just better understand the need that the city has. We didn't want to leave it there necessarily, though, on these two questions. Or on this question, whether they were going to vote yes or no, we wanted to ask why, right? So among those 66% of respondents who would support a 0.35 sales tax increase, we asked them why. Not surprising. The, the number one theme was just, they support the fire department and emergency services, and they realize how important it is for the city. Also, street and sidewalk repair and maintenance. Again, when you consider the content of the ballot language, not surprising that those two things really are the, are the two that they appreciate the most. But there's also just, among some folks, a general willingness to invest in the community and just the trust in the city's responsibility and use of data. We had folks actually, you know, praising the graphs and the tables and the statistics that they were shown in the survey, saying, okay, you can tell the city has really, you know, done their homework in terms of how they're presenting this to voters. The 23% who would oppose the 0.35 sales tax increase, again, not too surprising. Taxes are already too high, and they cite financial hardship. So this, just this idea that the content of the ballot measure doesn't matter if it's a tax increase. For some of these folks, they're not going to be able to support it. Also, among, again, these 23% of respondents, there is some perception of waste or poor project oversight that they want to see improved before they vote yes. So first, and again, I would remind you again that we're talking to 23% of respondents, and this is the third most common theme. But this idea that combining the fire and roads in one ballot measure is maybe something that they would like to see them broken up so that they could view them, or they could vote on them each on their own merits. And then also, there's just some comments in there about preference for some kind of alternative funding source. So whether that's, and these are the kinds of things that they mentioned. Marijuana taxes, developer impact fees, property taxes, or reallocating funds from other, what they consider to be non-essential areas. I'm actually seeing that, that's always kind of been a theme in a lot of our work, but we're seeing it more and more this year. Folks do want you to get creative. And so even in some of the message testing that we'd seen before, the city is getting creative. And so that's part of the story. But they want you to exhaust all possible options before considering a tax increase. And we're seeing that in a lot of places. Now we're going to, as we explained to them, discuss a potential alternative plan that is a combination property tax and sales tax increase. So we explained that while the first ballot measure would only be a sales tax increase, this would be a property tax increase and a sales tax increase. But we're also talking about the difference in what they would get if these two measures were approved by voters, when, in terms of Stations 3 and 4. So we showed them some images, and then we said, how does this grab you? The potential temporary capital bond property tax increase reads as follows. And here's the language for that, and shall the mill levy be imposed? So again, that's, we're letting them know this is a property tax increase for those folks who aren't familiar with the language in terms of what the mill levy means and what that impact might be on them. And then the potential sales tax increase reads like this, with these two bullet points. And so given those two as a package, asking them together how they would vote, 32% would vote yes on both. So again, that's the largest number among these, you know, five options. But then you have 24% who would vote no on both, 20% who would vote yes on the sales tax and not on the property tax, 7% who would vote yes on the property tax, but not on the sales tax, and then 17% undecided. So you can kind of see a dynamic here where, when you introduce the idea of two different ballot measures, for a lot of folks, it turns into, okay, I'm going to pick and choose. And it, they, they need more, you know, they need more constant, they need more like a drumbeat, like, no, these, we would want these together, right? It's not a pick and choose, pick your favorite one, don't vote for one or the other. We really want them together. And so obviously, what's a little concerning here is that only 32% say they would vote yes on both. That 20% who say they vote yes on the sales and not on property taxes, okay, that gets you over 50. But it's not really what you want, right? You, you want the combination. And so clearly, I think what's, what you can see here, and we can talk about this in our discussion later, it's just introducing the property tax is something that causes folks to have a little bit of pause. And we see that again in the verbatim responses as well. We asked them here, why, among that 32%, why would you vote yes? The critical need is there, the infrastructure improvements are overdue. They think it's important to invest in the community. So a lot of that tracks, obviously, with what we saw on just the sales tax. Among those who would vote yes on a property tax and no on a sales tax, here's the reasons why. And these are very typical in terms of folks who prefer a sales tax over a property tax, or prefer, sorry, prefer a property tax over a sales tax, is they view a sales tax as regressive in the sense that it hurts lower-income residents more. And they view a property tax as fairer, more predictable. And for these folks, again, the 7%, they often talk about it in terms of, oh, it's rolled into your mortgage or paid annually, and so it's maybe more stable in those senses. Clearly, the much larger group, about three times as large, would vote yes on the sales tax, not on the property tax. And here's why. There is a significant level of concern about property taxes being already too high and rising uncontrollably. And so you see, you see folks there mentioning any number of things, whether it's, you know, assessed value and not being happy with how accurate their assessed value is. You know, increases in escrow shortages, the burden on those with fixed incomes. This is all very common that we see in cities up and down the front range. And the, the other part of it is that they see sales taxes fairer because it spreads the burden among those who aren't just homeowners, right? So it's going to include renters, visitors, commuters, shoppers. So, it's going to include renters, visitors, commuters, shoppers, not just homeowners. So, they appreciate that. And they also think that the sales tax allows them to control how much they pay based on what and where they shop. And that's a very common, you know, viewpoint as well when folks are weighing the benefits of a sales tax versus a property tax. And then that roughly one quarter that would vote no on both measures, again, they don't want to have any tax increases, property tax or sales tax. There's skepticism about how the city's managing funds and so they want some more demonstrated, whether it's transparency or audits, whatever they're looking for. And they also, among this roughly quarter, believe that the city should re-prioritize better use of existing revenue. Also, some, some people will say, oh, you can do this in phases or smaller scale investments. So, again, that's roughly among the quarter who would vote no on both. And I thought this was enlightening as well. I'm glad we asked it to that seventeen percent who said, I'm not sure what to make of the, of the two combination ballot measures. The number one thing they want to know is what it would cost them personally, how it would affect their own household, which is, again, not at all surprising. They also, some of them need more detailed breakdowns of how the money would be spent. And again, not surprisingly at all, some folks mentioned just confusing language and lack of clarity. And that's, you know, through no fault of, of, you know, attorneys or whoever. Some people just look at the taper language and say, I cannot make heads or tails of this, right? And you could write the perfect language that is, you know, fits within taper and they'd still say, God help me, I don't know what this means, right? And so, you see that a lot. And then we'll, we'll close here again, these demographics, where possible, are weighted to reflect what we anticipate odd-year turnout to look like. So, you see sixty-five plus, is there a thirty-seven percent of the vote? You see the party affiliation of the respondents, living situation. So, you see the rent versus own split there. And then also income, we have a pretty good income mix across the city, which we're happy with. And with that, we will take any questions. I can jump back to slides if needed. So, yeah.
Commissioner Rosati?
Thank you for the presentation, very thorough, thorough report. I did take the survey. I had, I got a link and it was thorough. It was very long, very long. And I think you mentioned it, there's a mixed bag of these results, right? Because even for the ones where we are, where we're getting high ratings on our services, that's actually not great if you look at it from both ends, right? On one end, if someone believes that everything's fine, why would they want an increase of their cost? On the other end, is what is the obvious, they think it's fine because we're managing it well and they trust us to manage an increase, right? So, I take all the positives as a mixed bag of, ah, you know, off-year election, that makes it even tougher, right? That's one piece I want to just say out loud. Also, anyone who took this, so it was very, very long. I did get a lot of feedback from residents through the week in different modes, modems? Sorry, what's the word? Mediums, right? Phone calls, emails, like what the hell is this? Way too long. Some people were like, oh, great. I said yes to it last time. I want to say yes to it again. You know, a mixed bag, mostly negative because of the length. So, my, what I take from all of that combined is, anyone who actually takes this all the way through from start to finish, is probably a super engaged voter and that's actually not our target, right? Those folks are probably going to say yes anyway. I'm just, right? Because they are informed, they're super informed. The average voter won't take as much time to actually read taper language, like you said. And so, it's a concern for me. I'm just laying out the concerns because I'm leading up to what I think can counter those. Right? That's the second thing. The map on page twenty-six, so that map that shows the service gap in the middle, I've heard feedback that it's actually not a good thing to show because if you live in one of, in like Fire Station Number Three and you see you're covered, then you're good, right? Why would you want, right? So, take that as you will. It's a mixed bag showing that because if you're not living in that gap, there's very little incentive for a resident to say, yeah, let's raise our taxes to cover somewhere that I don't live in. Unfortunately, I know it's, we live in a community and we should be, you know, communal and care about the whole community, but a lot of people do care about their own situations. So, that's one piece. The results, all these results were similar to the previous survey, correct? The last time we did this?
They're about ten points less, I'm sure.
In terms of like, we should do it because the majority of people are saying yes. But with all those concerns, and we saw the results of the actual ballot question. So, it leads me to the question that I've been asking for, I'm sure Joe, he's sick of me asking this, but I think we definitely need a significantly large education budget from the city. And we only have till August twenty-fifth to do it and it's a month and a half left. So, my question to you, City Manager, I assume we have a plan at this point. Do we have what that budget number is for that piece, that period of time yet?
So, we don't have the final budget. We really wanted to see what council's direction is tonight. We have been working on it. We're working on, for example, a public affairs company to join and work with the city and pair up with Magellan. And we have, you know, because of, we're not there yet with City Council, we haven't retained that firm, but we could retain a firm or that firm shortly, at which point they would help us scope out the proper campaign, given the timeline, and that would give us a much better estimate for you of the budget for this work. You know, as City Manager, I have certain authorities to commit resources, so those have been committed to get us to where we are today. And then we would report back based on council's direction tonight for any future budget needs.
Do you know when we'll, when we'll have that number? Just to know what the budget will be? Is that two weeks, four weeks? If you got direction tonight to move forward, what's the estimated timeline, when we'll get to hear that number?
I can, I can bring that back post haste, so I could bring that pretty quickly. I wouldn't say just tonight, I'll be able to give you a council date, but that would be a priority. But again, I have authorities with existing budgets to keep it moving until such time as we would need more funds from, you know, to be authorized by City Council if that was the case. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're using what you can now, so we're not wasting time, but you'll get us the actual strategy plan soon. Is what I'm hearing.
Right. Yeah, we really needed to do the polling first to know what we were looking at with our community because if the results weren't strong like they are being presented tonight for at least one of the initiatives, we wouldn't be probably looking at a budget at all.
Right, yeah. But thank you for this. It was a lot of work. I'm sure you did it really quickly. I just wanted to lay out those concerns, but I think they can be countered with, and I've been saying a hundred K for the education budget from the city, but that should do it. But thank you.
Commissioner Chamilia?
Thank you. I'll say, we were very explicit in asking for the language to be clear and I think that you did a good job on that. So, I just want to address that and say thank you to both staff and to Magellan because we reiterated several times on several of these questions. I just want to, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. You just said it, but I really couldn't hear you. Could you reiterate the difference between the results for the first two questions, which were the uninformed and the informed sales tax question compared to last year's results?
So, yeah, I, and we should have really included that in the presentation. I don't have an exact off the top of my head, but I believe, as David said, we were measuring about ten points higher.
Yeah, and again, it was fire only, so it wasn't exactly apples to apples, you know, just to keep that in mind. But yeah, it was, it was stronger, but we also held that up against a property tax because, and then two versions, we started high and then went low. So, there was almost like eight different ballot measures, measurements in that last one. And the informed on the sales tax, the half cent, I believe came in at seventy-one.
And the other thing I'll point out is that last year, yeah, Chris has it right here. Sixty-seven to seventy, so, yeah. So, last year's results are weighted to reflect presidential turnout, which is quite a bit different from odd-year turnout. And that actually answers a little bit of what the previous concern was, is that in terms of educated, informed voters, they're going to make up a higher percentage of odd-year turnout anyway because turnout will be lower. The, not to say the only people voting will be the hyper-engaged, but they're going to make up a larger percentage of turnout. So, yes, it's a little tricky, as David said, to compare the two, but that's another reason it's tricky to compare the two is they're weighted differently, so.
Understood. I'll try to be brief in my redundant comments from last time. I'll just bring out my concerns are, to Commissioner Rosati's point, we need an extremely thorough education plan. And I want to make sure we're not making, doing everything the same as we did last year, which was already a short turnaround time. You heard, council heard my voice last time. I still think a more methodical approach is needed here, just to make sure we get this done properly. And it sounds like we have the fact that it's an odd year against us and not a presidential election against us and our numbers are lower. So, I'll just be real loud about all of those concerns. I absolutely share Commissioner Rosati's concern for matching funds, for figuring out where the budget goes. If we did it this year or next year, in my opinion, that's regardless. We should have those funds starting now because the education piece should be a year and a half long process. It takes a long time to get to everybody. I have a feeling, you know, that we'll push ahead and we can see and I can be convinced if we're full steam ahead that we can make this happen and I will be boots on ground. I know Commissioner Demat is boots on ground and I'll be reaching out personally to as many residents as I can to push this. But I just want to make sure that we're all very aware of the risks and we know exactly what we're doing. But I just want to say, good job on the survey. You did the language well. The maps look good. I have a lot of concerns about going this year and I'm hoping that perhaps City Manager, you can help address those and hear some of your thoughts.
Yeah. Add one comment. The one advantage you do have is turnout. Sixty-four thousand people voted last November. This odd-year election, that number's going to be closer to thirty thousand. So, you're not going to have anywhere near as much of a targeted universe of folks that typically voted in an odd-year election. So, your dollar's going to go farther. It's fewer households to canvass and hit. So, I'm just putting that on the table just to be aware. That is one benefit of an odd year, you know, so.
The other thing that materialized last year, I mean, anyone who remembers getting that ballot in the mail, it was an incredibly long ballot. And I can't imagine that there wasn't some kind of ballot fatigue for folks by the time they reached, you know, the more local questions that they were eventually going to be voting on. And so, the argument that some folks have, and sometimes it plays out, sometimes it doesn't, but in an odd year, there's typically less competition in terms of other questions on the ballot or just general, the ballot's way too long and people are just voting no because they're just fed up being asked so many times for so many different things.
Right, okay. So, to reiterate, it'll be a shorter ballot, fewer voters, unfortunately, audience. And we will do everything we can to target those voters and, okay. And then anything to add?
Yeah, and I can add, it is very different this time, this to be part of City Council's consideration and deliberation tonight. The pre-engagement education has already been higher. We're out in many more forums already with existing resources, you know, at events. The mayor and I's monthly session, we've covered this at least twice. We've talked about it multiple times in City Council. City Council's been engaged in the production of the poll and the direction on the poll. So, every time we do that in public, it's additional exposure for our community. We have two, as I mentioned earlier, two key stakeholders that are highly engaged with us, the Chamber of Commerce this time and the, and our, and our union. I would say also that the City Council and the City Manager and staff are much better connected this time, that I think our relationship is much stronger. And then the last thing that I would say, and I think that David said it at the last meeting when we were talking about this with you, is that the, once the city's work is finished, first of all, we've already invested more in city education and engagement up to the point in time now than we did in the entire time last time. And we still have six or more weeks to go of city engagement. We've got a flyer that was already predistributed at our July fourth ceremony for fireworks and we've been pushing material out pretty regularly. The fundraising for the private citizen group was not adequate. David talked about that, I believe, last time. It was very underfunded by at least a factor of three. Almost all that money came from union dues because our union stepped up and put their money in. It would be very different this time. I believe already signed up for that action or fundraising committee are almost two dozen people, which is an order of magnitude larger than last time. And so, some very key differences heading in, combined with what Magellan describes as potential opportunities with an off-year ballot. It didn't strike us intuitively that that would be the case before we engaged with Magellan and did the polling. But there are factors for us to consider. One of the things that we do see here on Mondays, Monday nights and also with City Council and Community Communications, is we do have a highly engaged, significant population in Westminster and that I think that the data from Magellan will show that those are the people that are going to show up for this ballot measure, at least in those percentages that can be predicted. So, I would say already, those would be the factors that, that's what's different so far this time. Of course, council tonight can tell, can say, even on the balance of all those things, we're going to say, don't, don't go ahead and we, you know, we can stop. I should say, you know, in the six or so weeks remaining before the ballot would drop, we're going to have our city staff let people know in the field about what our needs are on streets and fire, specifically our fire crews. And so, this is different than last time. So, they're out in the community daily, weekly, hourly, moment by moment. And there's tremendous opportunities for them in the fire, in the case of our fire crews and our emergency response crews to hand out material like this with residents and talk through any questions that people have. That's a lot of engagement on a twenty-four seven operation. The same with our streets crews. So, when our streets crews mobilize for projects, construction projects, crack seal repairs, you name it, they can also have discussions as the crew is setting up. The foreman can walk the street and say, did you know we're here today? This is what we're working on, but we're not funded at the level that we need to do this in every neighborhood. So, those would be some of the key differences. Of course, all that stops when the ballot drops because the city backs out, but we still have a lot of time left to do that kind of work. And so, we can put a lot more energy into a shorter period of time and probably get a better chance heading into the ballot.
Incredible. Thank you. Thank you for giving the chance to talk about all the many different avenues that we're approaching this from. And forgive me, do we have any, I know that we have your mayor manager talk tomorrow. Do we have any town halls between now and the twenty?
Thursday, the twenty-fourth?
Thursday.
Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned that, that we're building up to a town hall on this topic alone on July twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth with the community. So, that's, and the flyer, we'll hand out a copy here. The flyer talks about that specifically and we're going to keep pushing and promoting that. So, if you are interested in these results, we're telling our community, please come to the town hall and express and ask questions and get more information. And that will be the focus of, that'll be the only purpose and focus of that, of that town hall.
Thank you. Perfect. And then I'll just call out, because you just said it, is that last year, you know, the union paid all of the dues for the campaign and so we can't expect them to make that lift this time. And so, we will have to take on that burden. I think we're aware and we're already making the steps and taking the steps forward to make that happen, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that so that when we talk about the budget, we have that in mind. So, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Hough?
Yeah, I just want to clarify on what Commissioner Chamilia just said. So, I just want to be clear. So, aside from doing community fundraising, we are spending city dollars on this. So aside from doing community fundraising, we are spending city dollars on this. I just want to be really clear that we are.
Counselor, we are, and if Council says, go for this ballot, well, keep engaging the community and build up to the ballot in November, we will increase that.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not just completely dependent on the fundraising, that there's another, I just want to be clear. Okay. And then, so you touched a little bit on this. I just want to understand this a little bit better about this survey being ten points less than last year. I understand what you're saying about it being a little bit hard to compare apples and oranges because this is talking about two issues where last year it was just the fire department. My concern is that it polled so high last year, but then when we actually, the votes actually came through, it was much, much lower than the polling. So do you think the reason why it's ten points less is because it's a better survey, it's better polling, or because it's less favorable, or are there other reasons you might think would be important to expand upon of why there's that ten-point difference?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is just what we're looking at right here, right? So a lot of it is just the way that it's weighted differently to where it's an older electorate compared to a younger electorate last year. So, you know, it's hard to say for sure, but I think that would account for probably a lot of the differences, just simply that this survey data is weighted to reflect odd-year turnout, whereas last year's was weighted to reflect presidential-year turnout.
It's the dominance of those seniors in the plurality of this makeup, I mean, significantly, like we're weighting it at thirty-seven percent versus twenty-four percent. Those folks are extremely tax-sensitive, and they make up that ten points will bring down the number because they feel that they can't afford it. And we have so many fewer, younger voters there that I would reiterate what Ryan said, you know, there as well. However, we know the roads are where we need people to be. You had more than fifty percent rating them as, you know, fair to poor. That's a level we want to see, and I feel that that is bringing in because they want that addressed, not to say that they're insensitive, but what Counselor, I do not want to say your name wrong, Aziyah.
Sure. I'm kidding.
No, but it's, I'm just saying that it is, it is different, but that's some of the headwinds that are going to bring it down for the most part, you know. But I wouldn't, you know, the method was the same, you know? It's a random sample of your likely voters, and so it's, it's just that the ballot measure's a little bit different, and it's an older electorate. And good point, though, just to make the observation, there are unfortunately times where certain communities, what's in it for me, and I would say the road piece expands that. So everybody benefits from that, where perhaps last time. And then, and again, I know we've covered this in prior meetings, just discussing our professional opinion of the resources you had in the last campaign, let alone how it was run.
Okay. So I should have more confidence in this survey because we are approaching the campaign differently this year.
One hundred percent.
Okay, okay.
This is a much better unified effort than what happened last time, let alone resources. And I just feel from being more involved, to be honest, that I'm encouraged by what I see from all stakeholders, from the electeds to staff, to the folks that really want to see this happen.
And it sounds like we may be spending double last year on a smaller electorate.
And that's a good thing.
Okay. Okay, that, that makes me feel a lot better. Thank you.
Counselor, come on.
I have a handful of things, they're mostly my opinions, but I think it's important for people to understand. So we talked about the community group. I know for Mayor Potem and the mayor and I, we were all at the open house at the Public Safety Center, and we were getting people signed up, and we got great response. I think that's probably where we got a lot of sign-ups from. So, I mean, this work is already happening, and in terms of the community piece, which needs to be in place because once the city no longer can participate because of election rules, we want to make sure that's in place. So with the mayor at the helm, we already have a strong following. The other thing I want to thank, Manager Andrews, because I heard about this needs to be a year-plus campaign. This has been. This has been a campaign since the mayor called Jody the day after the election and said, all right, we lost, let's figure out how we get this passed. You know, so we actually have been doing that work, in my opinion. And one of the things that I asked for strongly was stakeholders, and I see the stakeholders here in the room that I specifically asked for, being the Chamber, the union, community group that we've started building. And I say all this because I still feel very strongly this is the right year. For all the reasons that we've heard tonight, this is, for me, this is my fifth municipal election in a row in the city of Westminster. So it is a much different demographic than we see in the presidential years. I don't like our chances in the presidential years because you have a much different group of people who come out that don't pay as much attention to municipal elections, and often what I hear from people is they don't participate because if they don't have one of us who show up at their door and they don't know who they, any of us are, they're less likely to turn in a ballot because they don't want to vote for somebody they don't know. So the folks that you do typically get, to Counselor Zadi's point, are the hyper-engaged because they're hyper-engaged in municipal elections, municipal services, which is the same with, like, you brought up the map point. I have two things on the map point. One, I agree that's a good area where we need to educate people because if they look at just the map and say, well, I'm inside one of those service areas, they're not getting the full story. The full story is it's one ecosystem, and it's actually bigger than one ecosystem because we have what we do with CAD-to-CAD. So that actually doesn't just hurt our internal city when they have to pull from one other area. It hurts our neighbors' communities because they're having to pull services from those areas to fill that gap. So that's a great call-out because we need to make sure that's part of our educational piece. But the other thing that comes to mind when you talk about that, when you look at the demographic, who's going to vote in this election, especially when you're going to get more seniors, I heard both that point made, as far as if you don't need it. Also, when you were going through this survey, you said folks who haven't interacted with, as much with those services, might say that they're not familiar because they haven't interacted. The senior population are the ones who interact the most with our fire service. That's just the fact of the call load. So those are the folks that understand, they want those folks to show up as soon as possible. You know, so that's all that to just kind of, from my perspective, address some of the concerns I've heard here. Because they're good concerns, but, you know, I also want everybody to understand why I so strongly feel like odd-year is better for municipal services. And the other one, and this goes back to the survey, Counselor Zadi, I took the survey too, I got it as well. You know, it was the way political surveys are, but people do get tired of them. And by the time you get to the end, I always wonder, are we losing part of the points because people just start clicking when they get to the end of it? But the same thing does happen with the ballot. And if you look at that ballot from last time, it was super long. This one should be, I mean, at this point, I haven't heard anybody else in the county partners or schools talking about any initiatives that I've heard about so far. So you potentially might have a ballot that has only Westminster stuff on it between those of us running and this issue. I think that this is still the right year to do it. I initially have been very strong proponent of just the sales tax because I know that it polls better because of the reasons that we talked about splitting it. I think the split mechanism would be great if we could pass it. Those numbers don't look great to me. I feel like we need to go to the sales tax. And then I am also pleased to know, and this is more for the community than anything, because I know we know this, that Manager Andrews is already thinking, has been thinking, if, you know, if the full vote doesn't pass, what he's going to do in future years to fill that, those needs. So I feel like we're set up in a good way for, you know, this to pass, and then also that we have a leadership team who knows what they need to do after this to fill the other needs that aren't going to be able to be filled by the sales tax.
Counselor Ireland?
I don't think, one thing we've ever addressed is, is if this passes and we get a point three-five sales tax, is it going to be split evenly between roads and fire? How is the money going to be spent?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Ireland. What we're looking at is approximately eight million dollars of ongoing, ongoing expenses, six million of that going to staffing fire stations, two million dollars of that going to streets, and then debt service payments to pay for the construction of Station Seven. So two million dollars a year ongoing for streets.
And then do we need, we need to make up the difference with that with a fee on our water bill, right, for the streets?
That is one option, yes.
Okay. Well, I think it's just too soon. I think people have not forgotten that they voted no last year, and the fact that the survey's showing that it's going down, I think there's some serious concerns with our economy, and raising taxes is not something I am willing to support because our economy is really on not stable ground right now. So I'm going to be saying no as usual. Thank you.
I just want to, I appreciate Counselor Ireland's concern for the taxes and the economy, but, you know, I would just remind us all, we're not raising taxes. We don't have a right to just raise taxes. What we have a right to do is give the people the option. And to me, the right thing to do is to give our constituents the option. By just saying no, you're just telling them that you don't, in my mind, don't trust them to make a decision. I think the best thing we could do is give them the option, say, here's the gaps that we're not providing as a city, because we were all elected to provide those services to the city. We can't do that with the resources we have. So the right thing, in my opinion, to do is provide them an option to do that, and then they get to make up their mind. If they decide that they don't want to spend it that way, then, you know, whoever is in these seats next year have a harder conversation in terms of what do you want to start looking to cut from services? Because at the end of the day, this is a service that is one of our very core services. It's life and safety, and so if we don't figure out how to fill some of that gap, you're going to look at cutting things, in my opinion, would be the responsible thing. So, and even with that, at least then it's up to the taxpayers to say, we don't want to spend more money, we want you to go back and cut other services. And that's really the option we're giving people, and that shouldn't be up to the seven of us to make that option for the residents of the city.
Can I make one more point?
Sure.
We, the residents of the city are not deciding to pay for a campaign to get them to vote for it. So that is one decision we are making, to spend their money to campaign to get them to vote for it. And this happens over and over in government, and that's why people do not trust the government. And so I have a problem with that. If individuals outside of taxpayers want to pay for a campaign to get this through, I'm all supportive of it, but not for taxpayer money. Thanks.
Mayor. I appreciate that fact, but I would say, just like the city manager is held responsible in our earlier conversation to council, we're held responsible to the voters. And if the majority of us think this is the right thing to do, and the people think it's the wrong thing, I'm sure that they'll let us know.
And there's an even better point, right? I mean, that's true, but we are not spending a hundred K or whatever that's going to be to get them to vote for the ballot question. We're spending it to educate them on what the ballot question is, and I think that's a role of government that we don't do very well very often, is educate the public on why and what's happening, and just informing them. So the education campaign is not a pro-ballot campaign. It's a, here's what's going on. Lives are at stake. Here's what this question's about, which they never get, right? And I think it's a service to actually educate the public on what the hell that they're looking at, and I think we should do that a lot more often.
Mayor Potem?
So I am of the opinion that if, you know, I know one of the other cities, and many other cities, will put out ballot measures multiple years before actually getting something, and so I feel like we just need to be dogged about continuing to work towards this while at the same time being creative annually if needed to recalibrate and do what we need to do. And that shows just over time that we are adjusting and, you know, trying to work toward providing the services that we need and then making the case each year, like, okay, we did this, but we still need this, and we can continue that educational thing. So I'm supportive of moving forward right now with this. I totally understand the hesitancy to, you know, be going out now and wanting to have more time for education because that's where I really started in this whole conversation. But seeing the results, you know, cathy on it as they are, and just knowing, you know, this is, this is our best foot forward. We can get the education out there, and we just need to keep trying, and if we fail this year, then we go out again next year. And hell, if we fail it that year, we go out and, you know, hit another odd year. Because I totally, you know, the size of those ballots and the exhaustion you get from a presidential ballot is that much, not presidential, but I get a national. So I do think that we should just probably stick to the sales, given the response back. And I think it is confusing anyway to have two different things on there now that, you know, once you read it, it's kind of, not overly, it's just too much to ask.
In my mind, either we need this or we don't need it. We needed it last year, and we need it more than ever this year. Jody, as our city manager, you came in, and we did start this the day after the last election, and you took that so seriously. You have found two one-time dollar amounts that will fund one of the stations and another one that will build our training piece. No one ever looked at anything like that last year. And talking about where are we this year compared to last year? Last year, June twenty-second, was the first time that we had any discussion on this topic. We have had, as Jody said, our mayor-manager pieces twice now. We, in April, had a town hall only on fire and streets and had people looking at maps and talking through things. It was a great evening. As of this coming Friday, we will have Citizens for Equality Westminster will be finalized and will be able to accept money, and Citizens Committee is being formed. Anyone's welcome, if you're listening and you want to be part of it, just reach out to me. We've got twenty-two people, former, from former fire chiefs to others that have been on council, to citizens that just care about our community and know our needs. What we need to look at is we need to know every food truck that's in the neighborhood, and we need to know the date, and part of this group is going to have to say, I need two people at this event for an hour and just have the materials ready for people to talk to. We have National Night Out. I'm counting on at least six of you to be there and help with teams of some of our other community members to be there as the fire and the police are there. It's not fair to put, I can't, I still can't believe, I had no idea that our fire department folks had to do everything by themselves last year. Remember, we were left out of the conversation last year, and people hate us for never seeing us, but I take that hate, but we, behind the scenes, were trying to get involved and were told we had no purpose. So, so these are the things that this group is thinking about. We have community groups that any of us know about, see if we can get people there to talk. We have HOAs we need to get flyers to, and I know Andy's just been waiting for whatever your decision is. A lot of this has been formed. Things are ready to go tomorrow, depending on a decision, or stop tomorrow, depending on the decisions. But these things are in place, ready to start if a decision is made. But these things are in place, ready to start if a decision is made. We have letters ready to go as early as Wednesday for fundraising. But again, we had to wait for decision. We will train the people that come into this group so that they know stuff as well as we do, so they can present what we, the needs of this city are for our streets and our fire department, and they'll feel comfortable in sharing. So that's where we are today. And we'll just continue to grow from that. All of that's been put into place, not knowing if this stops tonight. So what we need is, did you want to talk about how much we're going to go for?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to mention two things. In terms of, and I should have mentioned this much earlier tonight, but it supports the many of the comments from from you, is that we are really in a race against escalation as well for costs. So waiting one year to move forward, we've already seen our buying power erode tremendously since last November. And that's one of the drivers from staff that you may hear some of our energy tonight around this issue is that to go again this year will, it is a race against escalation with steel, concrete, labor. You know, our buying power is declining rapidly. And and that's why I want to make sure we also take time tonight to talk about the 0.35%. That's what we polled on for the very first question out of the gate, uninformed. I can tell you that the, my commitment, and I think it echoes City Council's commitment, is to not go back out to the community with what we asked for last time. We got resoundingly thumped on that, and and we need to really listen to that. And that's consistent when we hear the feedback. One of the messages that that is resonating with the community is that the city is is turning over every stone we can to find different ways to address these needs. We heard that in unsolicited comments, in the survey itself, and also in all of our discussions and feedbacks. So funding the training center separately, Station Eight separately. But having said all that, with escalation, that what and Magellan is here to help answer, or we're going to throw you a cold question, is to help answer this question is, is there any room at all with with our voters to have them perhaps consider, you know, a point four, let's say, just say, for example, a point four percent versus a point three five? And I ask that because that extra point oh five would help, would get us one of the three stations renovated as well. So instead of three stones for us to turn over, Station Three, Station Four, and Station One, none of those are in the point three five. What's in point three five is Station Seven and the personnel to operate those, and Council Ireland, the $2 million for streets maintenance. But if if, and this is really where we need council direction tonight, and Magellan's professional advice, is if we went to a point four, we could include, for example, Station Three renovations, and that would allow us, over time, to turn stones over and get Station Four and Station One renovated. Reminding our community that Station One, for example, was built in 1969. And we have state-of-the-art firefighters and EMS responding out of a 56-year-old station right now. And so that would be the reasoning and the escalation for potentially considering slightly higher than the point three five percent. But I think maybe before, turn it over to council to direct, maybe get your comments on whether we ought to, whether that's crazy talk, we ought to stay with the point three five and take longer for the other three stations, or whether there might be some room there.
Yeah, yeah, and all I did is pick as well. But I mean, to me, it's, it's difficult to imagine that there's a huge tipping point between point three five and point four in terms of support. You know, when you do this work, there there are kind of like magic numbers, like point five, 1%, but the difference between point three five and point four, if it can be so easily explained as, here's what that extra point oh five gets us. I I, to to me, there there shouldn't be a ton of hesitation towards taking that step.
And I would agree. I think there's room. I think you are still honoring what the voter, the voter said last November by reducing the ask by 20%. I think that is a fair, and you can say that honestly and be like, look, we, we're going lower. We know it's a tough time. And that even though we measured what we did on point three five in the survey, the good that that extra, you know, little bit more would do. I I think you're able to explain that plainly and clearly in a trustworthy manner. We know your numbers are good on the image of the city overall. If you had some problems there, I would maybe have a little more hesitation. But spending taxpayer money wisely, you have good numbers there. So I do think that there is room in that, from everything that I've seen as leading up to tonight with regards to the effort, the unity, the survey, where we're going, and the commitment, I I think that, I think we, you can get it done at point four.
I would like to know what the union's opinion is on the difference between point three five and point four.
August, could you come up to the, do you mind to the mic, microphone?
I'm August Rashi with the Westminster Local 2089. Yeah, we we are extremely interested in seeing progress, in whatever way we can get it. The point three five was progress. Point, the point four helps deal with some of the things that we've had to deal with over the course of time. It doesn't, we're interested in covering. We're interested in providing service for for our service gaps. We're interested in putting our best foot forward. But we also live in these stations. We spend a third of our year living inside of those stations, and some of them have had leaks in the roofs. Anecdotally, we've had a mushroom grow in a bedroom before. There is a need for for some service inside of these stations, just for our own well-being. My number one priority is obviously best serving the people of Westminster. But within that also, you know, I'd like to make sure that my people in my union enjoy and are safe, the stations that they're in.
So you prefer the point four?
The point four.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Fortunately, this is exactly what I was hoping to hear, so thank you. I thank you for all of the different counselors for providing exact reasons why we think that this can be successful. So I am for for going forward this year. I just want to take a look at page 47 of the slide deck. I think that's the most important slide when we were going through it the first time. For those who are undecided, if we can try to figure out how to address some of these concerns, and I believe that we did say that we would clarify that the money would go exactly to the roads and the firehouses. I just want to ask, is, I didn't see that in the ballot language. So where is it that we're clarifying that for voters so that they do know exactly where the money is going? I think that would help solve a big part of our problem. And I guess my real statement is, if it's in there, you know, how do we say that it's not going to anything else?
Can I suggest something in the past? So 27J School District, okay, went for 20 years without getting a raise for their teachers and operations. We came on board and helped them in 2022. And we actually asked them, what does transparency and accountability look like in spending that you would believe? And from that research, they did come up with a regular transparent reporting mechanism that was in the ballot language. Am I right on that, Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, so so there's, there's certainly language that you can include in the ballot language that that makes that transparency point more explicit. It's not that if it's not in the ballot language, it means they're not doing it, right? But there are certainly, and and I I kind of defer to the the city attorney as well, whoever's writing the ballot language in terms of what can or can't be in there. But there are kind of pieces that you can include that they kind of do signal that transparency. Again, it it doesn't mean that if it weren't in the ballot language, you wouldn't be doing it anyway. But for some folks, especially that 17%, they do want to see that in there because it it will make a difference.
Auditing, things along those lines. There's a lot of components over the years that we have used to help create a little bit more trust there that there is going to be accountability in the spending without handcuffing you on a certain percentage, let alone dollar amount being allocated to one of the stations or so that it's it's so narrow, but.
And the other thing I would say about, you know, returning to this slide, this, the number one concern that these undecided folks have on that personal financial impact, that's talking about the property tax, right? And so if you go with the sales tax only option, that becomes much less of a concern. So when folks say they want to know how much it would cost them, they want to know, okay, you're talking about the mill levy. You know, what does that mean for me personally? So just just by going with just the sales tax option eliminates quite a bit of the need to address that concern. Not to say that there are other concerns, like you said, about accountability and transparency, but at least a sales tax is a tax that the people who are voting can more easily understand without it being specifically spelled out in the ballot language.
Right. Thank you.
Let me just share, over 20 years ago, the city I was part of, last time, 2A, and that went to fire and police. And so behind the scenes, I have been asking unmercifully, do we separate that so that, exactly what you're saying? Does it just melt into the budget? Or can we prove where that money's been spent? And tonight in pre-meeting, I was presented with, it's a pain in the, you know what, to do it, but our budget system can show you exactly where that goes. And what we did back then was say, here's, here is what the city owes fire and police as basics. And you can't just now let this, you sit and just keep this this way. And so I forget the percentages, you told me. But they have the proof of how much we're spending as a, as a city on the basic core things. And then what's come in from that money being used for what it stated in the language, and they are honoring it to the nth degree. So they they do that.
I love that. And maybe we can somehow promise constituents somewhere on our webpage that shows that, right? Since we're focusing so much on this issue. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, I had, sorry, councillor and and mayor. So it's auditable, every, the the fire truck, the ambulance that we purchased under 2A, the personnel, those are all accounted for separately in our budget, even so far as to indicate in our pay plan which positions are funded by those 2A revenues this many years later. And so so tonight, if you go home and and pull out, I know you have the pay plan on your coffee table. If you pull out the pay plan, you'll see the 2A positions highlighted. And those have carried forward for the last more than two decades.
That's amazing. Well, brilliant work, city. Thank you. And to me, this helps answer the question for going up to the point four, you know, because if we can clearly identify for folks exactly what the what, which, I mean, you've heard me voice my support for that in the past anyway. But I think that will help satisfy the need for constituents to understand where it's going.
Did you have your hand up? I guess I did, yes. Yes, the, on page 47, that did strike, that struck me as well in terms of needing to figure out how to handle that big percentage. That we're undecided. I do like the idea of adding some language in about accountability because it not only showed up in the property tax, but it was also for the sales tax one, too. So maybe that could counterbalance going up to the to the point four that we're just really clear. I was even going to say, can we say somewhere, like, check the, you know, if there's a, I don't know if the ballot language can do this or not, but just to even say that we would report it on our website or just, you know, and be able to include the website even better. But if not, at least.
Sure, that, yeah, that's exactly the kind of language that we're talking about, right? Yeah, you're right. It'd be awesome if you could have the the specific.
QR code as well.
Can't do that, but, but yeah.
Yeah, there's examples we're happy to present to you, as well as your outside counsel. And it's not that uncommon.
I don't want to leave him out. I see our communications person back there. So I'm assuming you've read through this front and back, and you're you're ready to educate people on how how this will work and how it hits their concerns and how it hits their pocket.
We're on page two. Andy, sorry, could you come to the mic?
Andy Lag, Andy Lag Communications Manager. We've been, we're on the end of page two of five-page roadmap, which is a high-level summary of a 20-page work plan. We're ready to roll with council's direction.
Great, thank you. I figured so, but I didn't want you to be left out. I think that the point four, if we don't think that that's a big difference, I'm just want to put out that I'm comfortable with that as well.
Counselor Zadig?
Yeah, I'm good with either or. Point four is fine. I think to the point August made, that if if we could help at least some of our firefighters who have to live in those conditions, then we should. And it's not that big of a jump. And I wanted to go back to an earlier point. I think you you made this point earlier about the dollars would go further in an odd year, right? And that's, but that's only if we target, right? So my question, city manager, is, when you bring the plan, the education communication plan to us, I'm assuming that will have the targeting and how you're planning on targeting, right? The odd year, because all this works only if we have targeted communications. So I'm be curious about that. And one idea to the list that you gave mayor and to Jody's list, we have candidates, right? There's an election. We are all door knocking, thousands of doors. We should be armed with something to, as we talk about ourselves, we can easily hand a household, so that's another avenue.
They gave those to us 4th of July. Yeah.
Okay.
Packets.
Packets to make copies?
Big old stacks, yeah.
Okay. So that'll be great. I I I think we have a lot of avenues. Thank you.
On that, sorry to interrupt, but we had, you had these at the 4th of July, but someone was asked if we could get them later because we didn't want to carry them around the field and end up on the ground. So we follow up, we could get those.
And I would have a feeling, talking with Andy, that hearing everything, this could get tweaked, spiffed up or whatever change. So once that's done, if we can each get stacks, I know they're talking about put them in libraries, rec centers, so people can pick them up, too. So they're thinking anywhere and everywhere, if we know businesses. I know Valenti said they put them on their counters, so.
I'm sure Jamie's going to encourage her people to put them out.
Yeah, we're sure that we can do that. But everybody's been working to have something, but we had to wait to tonight to see what the direction was. So I have six of us for the point four. And Council Ireland said she was not for this, so.
And one, one more point about the targeting. So as candidates, we all have databases to that target, right? Whatever we want. I'm curious to, I I'll be curious to see with with the targeting, specifically how and who and what. And I'm assuming you have the same or similar, or you have access to that. So, okay.
And I've also said to Andy, as we look at the letters going out for asking for money and whatnot, if he can put that in a scenario so each one of you that want one could get the letter, and you can personalize it and get it out to your people, I would think this can get, however it ends up, that you can send that to us, so we can send out in our emails, newsletters, whatever. So just know that we're thinking ahead to making things so they get shoved to you. You use them how. We each have different groups of folks, and so that's what we need. And another targeting place, I think, is our seniors. We have Covenant Village, which is like a city within a city. We have Keystone over at 112th. We have several, several of those places that if we can go in and have coffee and be available to to share and answer questions, I think that would go along. be available to, to share and answer questions, I think that would go a long ways too.
That's a, a really good idea. We used to, when I first was on, and I'm sure you used to do it, we used to do some coffees in the senior centers.
So, we have calendars to clear and meetings to get to.
Mayor, may I add, because councillor Ireland can't see this handout, we'll get it, we'll get it to her, and this is speaking to one of councillor Ireland's concerns, councillor that you expressed, so the opening to the handout that we're looking at says, "Join our community conversation about funding improvements for our neighborhood streets and emergency services," and the whole close of the handout is to invite people to get involved and to please join us for a town hall, councillor Carmelia, on Thursday, July 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Westview Recreation Center. So, the, the, the city's work is to inform and engage, have people know that these are the issues, and then come and engage with us in a town hall format, and talk about it, ask any questions, understand the concerns, understand what's potentially going to be advanced to them for their consideration as a tax consideration. And so, I, I just wanted to assure councillor Ireland that the, the city is, is investing in engagement with our community, which is one of my top two commitments to City Council, with the facts, and drive them into a town hall and engagement forums with us, which gives us more information and lets us know what they're thinking.
I think that's a really good point, manager Andrews, because to the point I was making, even if the residents say they don't want to increase the sales tax, and to councillor Azadi's point, they deserve to be educated about the problems that we face and how it impacts them. And to do that, that's going to cost money whether we're running a campaign for a tax increase or not. And, you know, the, I think that was well said, councillor Azadi, that people need this education. Quite frankly, last year, when this first started coming up, and even actually past that, to the mayor's point of us being left out of this, I became more passionate about this during some of our other town halls where the fire department was sharing some of the concerns, that in my eight years here, I didn't know that we were in the position that we are. Same with some of the things with the firehouses, and I went through the academy, and obviously when you go through the academy, they're trying to show you how great they are, so they're not showing that there's those kind of concerns, so council should have been better informed last time, first off, but second off, that people deserve to understand services impacted, the condition that their firefighters are, are living in, and all the things about this, so I, I don't see it as a waste of taxpayer money.
I just want to share, behind the scenes, I shared most of what's on my list here that I shared tonight, and I was told to be quiet, so...
I, I have some maybe off-the-record suggestions. I know these are out and they're really great, but just on the design to catch some eyes. And then, the last point, I think we've pounded this, I think most of us have said that we're for the sales, but just to clarify, if we want to make sure that that part is official for the record, I just, I think it's unfortunate that the second question polled the way it did, but it's also not surprising. I just want to say, I personally think that the smartest way to do this would be to do, you know, the split. And I have talked to some voters at the doors who are very informed, and when they hear about this, they immediately say, oh, yeah, you should split it, you've got really low property taxes. But those are, you know, so I think we need to do the choice that is polling well. That seems obvious, but I just want folks that are listening to understand why we're choosing the way we are, or at least for me.
And what I have under the point four is councillor Hart, Hot, councillor Carmelia, mayor Protem, Normella, councillor Demont, councillor Azadi, and the mayor.
Okay, that's very helpful, and I would say, any member of council, councillor Carmelia specifically, if you have any suggestions on this, please, you can send those directly to Andy. He loves feedbacks as we evolve, seriously, he, he really takes it into account. The last thing I would mention, you know, is that we specifically didn't tonight talk about a sunset option, and I would say that staff is not recommending that you present this as a sunset. I believe in the past, it, it doesn't impact much at all people's views of these, and then you're back in front of the same, you kick it down the road, and you're back in front of that again, and that feels disingenuous to the community. If we go through this with them, it wants to be a lasting solution. That, that would be my recommendation, so not, just, I just wanted to be clear, because we didn't talk about that tonight, and I, I didn't want anyone to leave misunderstanding or miscommunicating on that.
So, just like to the earlier point of, of what they did back when the mayor was here before with 2A, like making sure that people understand and that this is formed in a way that it's tied to future needs. We talk about that a lot with like the water utility, like how are we planning ahead? Because obviously, this fixes for a point in time, in 60 years, those stations are going to be old again, and so they're going to need to be improved. So, I want to, on that point, want to make sure that both for us and for the taxpayers, that it's very, very tight, that that's going to stay for the purposes that we're asking them to pay, or to approve it for.
And I know we do a lot of rebates of sales tax for different types of economic incentives, so I just want to keep this one non-rebatable.
Water tax.
Well, because we have the post-tax as part of it, and this would be a part of that chunk.
Anything else? Do you need a break before we go into executive session?
I, I need it, I need it to switch over to technology.
Oh, okay. But first, before we do anything, do we have reason for an executive, executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do, for the council's consideration, while you're still conducting the study sessions tonight, the final item on your agenda is an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy and progress on the potential sale, acquisition, trade, or exchange of property or property rights pursuant to 1113C2 of the Westminster Municipal Code and 2464024A1 of Colorado Revised Statutes. This relates to city-owned open space located east of Westminster Boulevard on the south side of 100 and, West 104th Avenue.
I'll just ask you if, state your name, and if you're willing to go into executive session and hold things confidential.
Obi Azadi, yes?
Amber Hart, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Steve Demont, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Councillor Ireland?
Christine Ireland, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
And Mayor, before you conclude the open portion of tonight's study session, I have one other question for City Council, and that is pursuant to the Westminster Municipal Code 1113G, under meetings, remote participation for councillor Ireland during an executive session will require council consent by a supermajority or two-thirds present, so I would just ask if you'd be willing to poll your colleagues on that particular requirement.
If you're, state your name, and if you're willing to allow councillor Ireland to be in executive session remotely.
Obi Azadi, yes?
Amber Hart, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Steve Demont, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is 9:43, and we're adjourned from our regular meeting, and we'll take a quick break before study session, I mean, executive session.
Executive.
I just got emailed to everybody. Councillor Ireland?
Yes.
Please go to the executive session.